Okay, for the record, it is Tuesday, April 2nd. It's one minute after six. We'll start with roll call attendance. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Here.
Councilmember Burnt?
Here.
Councilmember Palmer?
Here.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Here.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Here.
Councilmember Borton?
Here.
Mayor DeVeard?
Here.
Item number two is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you all rise and join us in the pledge to our flag.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three is our community invocation. Tonight will be led by Russell McCray with Living Grace Community Fellowship. Thank you for joining us. I would ask all those in attendance to join us in the community invocation or take this as an opportunity for a moment of reflection.
As I looked at the meeting agenda this evening, I saw that, as usual, you're caring for the land, so I have a couple of scriptures to offer tonight. John 15:13 tells us that greater love has no man than this, than to lay down his life for his friends. Then in Genesis 2:15, the Lord God took the man and put him in the garden of Eden to tend or serve the land, and also to keep it, and that word in Hebrew means to guard or protect. With that, may I offer this prayer. Heavenly Father and Creator of this lovely world, we come humbly to you asking for wisdom and strength for these servants of our city to follow your guidance, to be the best stewards of the land and the people you have placed them in charge of. Grant them insight and vision for our city, our residents, and the land which they consider in this meeting tonight. Keep our hearts humble and mindful that any good we can accomplish is bound in the care we have for those around us. Grant each councilman and our mayor with your favor as they follow your precepts and strive to serve this community and its children, seniors, and citizens. We thank you for your listening ear, in the name of Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Russell. Item number four is adoption of the agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
I'm going to make a few changes. Item 6N, as in Nancy, is going to get pulled off of the consent, moved to a 7A. Item 8C, that's going to be continued when we get to it, or at least as a request to continue when we get to it. But we're going to add on to the agenda item 10A, and that's an ordinance 19-1820. This was an ordinance, an amendment to the agenda somewhat late in the game due to circumstances we just discovered earlier today. Legal will probably give a better description of it, but it wasn't known to us that there was need for action when the agenda was set. It was made known to us today, so it was added today. Mr. Nary, if there's more context to that that's needed.
Madam Members, Councilmember, very briefly, this is part of our background checks that we do for various licensing because we're adding a new background check for the booting. The FBI then suspends all of our background checks until we get this amended, and so we don't want to slow down the process of all the other types of licensing that are coming in at this particular time, so we want to get this moving quickly, so we want to not delay it a week.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, with those amendments, I would move that we adopt the agenda. Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as stated. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All eyes motion carried. Sir Clerk, any signups under item number five?
No signups, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Item six is our consent agenda.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
With item 6N having been removed, I move that we approve the consent agenda as amended. The mayor to sign and clerk to attest. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as amended. Mr. Clerk, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All eyes motion carrying. One item was moved from the consent agenda. Item 7N is now seven, or 6N is now 7A. Mr. Palmer?
Madam Mayor, the reason I asked for this one to be taken off before we make the annual transfer that we do, wanted to, because we didn't know it was going to be on the agenda until we get the agendas on Friday, so I wanted some time to maybe have a discussion as council, on a future council meeting, as to ensuring that that's what we want to do with the funds before we make the transfer. I mean, I know there's the argument that we can transfer, we can always move it back later if we want to do something else with it, but the reality is that wouldn't happen. So I'd like to just hold off transferring it. It's not going to break anything, just give us a chance to have that discussion and move it later or spend it somewhere else.
Okay, well, I guess if council feels the same, we can move it to an agenda item next week, which is a workshop, or council can take action.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
Maybe a question for Councilmember Palmer, if you're open to it. Do you have some thoughts about, I guess, a different allocation of funds than what's proposed? You're just looking to have more time to contemplate that.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
I met with Finance sometime last year to discuss the logistics of potentially using it for roads, and understand it's a complicated thing, but I think that it could still be done, so I'd like to explore that idea and that. The reason that the funds exist is because we're overcharging the development community for permits and whatnot, so it's, it is growth that's causing these funds to exist within the city, so I want to do everything we possibly can to put it towards the number one thing that the public complains about growth about, and that's roads. So if there's any possibility of being able to use those funds legally for that purpose, especially where we've had conversations about wanting to partner with ACHD to put an overpass at Lender or move up any of our other priority projects, what better funds to use than these monies if it can be done?
Counsel there, this is not an item that we can necessarily discuss because it's not published. I guess the question in front of counsel is, do you want to put this off for a week as a specific budget item or item of discussion, or do you want to take action this evening?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
I'm comfortable taking action on this. It's sort of, it's consistent with what we've done annually. It doesn't prevent future changes if there's a desire of the collective group to allocate some portion of the money elsewhere, but the origin of this annual process was to ensure that if there are any excess revenues, that they're allocated to a capital improvement fund that ensures one-time expenditures, as opposed to taking an opportunity to expend it on recurring expenses. So I think this is consistent with it. Now whether or not the items within our consolidated financial plan for public safety and those capital needs should fall below roads that are funded by another agency, that's a big discussion, definitely for another day. I don't think it necessitates holding up this transfer that we do annually. So I'd support going forward now and approve the fund balance transfer, and I don't think it eliminates the discussion that Councilman Palmer is asking us to explore, but I wouldn't wait.
And I do think there has been a commitment from the elected officials to having the discussion after staff is able to get firmer numbers on what in particular, the lender overpass and some of the remaining questions were leading into that, and they are still continuing those discussions, and we'll be back in front of counsel. So, any other discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
A question for either Mr. Lavoy or Mr. Nary. Should the council take action tonight? There's nothing that would prevent us at a later point in time from using funds that are in the CIP to fund a road project. Should that be a decision the council would want to make at a future time?
No, it would not prohibit that.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Palmer?
Like I said, we make this transfer, it's not going back out. It goes into that account, and it'll be spent on something that will have a name plate with all of our names on it to serve the community and glorify ourselves. My preference would be, again, to just hold off and put it towards the number one thing people are asking for and demanding and that we've contemplated doing.
Well, I promise we won't do a name plate on the overpass.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
Move that we approve the recommended fund balance transfer of $3,251,404 to the Capital Improvement Fund, as proposed by Finance. Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum?
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt?
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer?
No.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All eyes, oh, I'm sorry. The eyes have it. I apologize, Mr. Palmer. Okay, action items under 8A, we have the Mayor's Youth Advisory Council update and also their presentation, participatory budgeting, their proposal and request. Ben, if you can also introduce yourself and who you have with you.
Madam Mayor, City Council, thank you for having us tonight. We're excited to propose our participatory budgeting project today that we've been working on for a very long time. We have MYAC member here with us today who's been spearheading the project, and we have also two more members of our executive council who introduced themselves. So yeah, we're going to start off with our proposal for the participatory budgeting project.
Madam Chair and councilmembers, I'm Jelena Corsi, and today we thank you for the opportunity to present our participatory budgeting proposal for this year. So essentially, what spearheaded our idea was we saw an issue in the community and in the nation regarding recycling and the lack of people participating in recycling and it being available for other people. So we found research showing that it's an obvious and big problem that actually affects us not only environmentally but physically as well. Here is a physical demonstration of the amount of trash that we produce from 25 trashcans with zero recycling receptacles, and so we aim to somehow dent that impact and create a better, more recycling community. So our ask for today is that we want to create recycling receptacles that are wrapped with youth-made art and put it around downtown Meridian to kind of revitalize downtown and bring that art and youth participation along with increasing our recycling.
Alrighty. Thank you again for this opportunity, Madam Mayor and all the council members here today. My name is Carson Moore, and additionally, I am a member of the Meridian Mayor's Youth Advisory Council. So if we talk about some of the logistics of our plan, we've done a lot of research, and we've found that Secure offers the best receptacles if we are to move forward with our plan. One of the main things that I would like to highlight is the fact that these receptacles shown here have carts that are removable, which makes the process of collecting the recyclable materials very streamlined. As far as location, earlier in the year, the youth council took a walking audit of the downtown Meridian area, and as was shown earlier, we noticed that there were 25 trashcans in our city, but there were zero recycling receptacles. So what we want to do is analyze the downtown area and pick the optimal locations for where we can place these recycling receptacles. Additionally, we want to ensure that we place our recycling receptacles next to the already established trashcans in order to reduce what's known as contamination. That's the mixing of trash and recyclable materials. And then additionally, this area shown here is called the city core, and currently it's covered by the Meridian City's master license agreement with ACHD. And so in talking with ACHD, we do not foresee any permitting problems as far as placing our trashcans, or our recycling receptacles, excuse me. And then lastly, in talking with Republic Services, we found that there would not be an additional expense to the city for placing these additional recycling receptacles, and the process would be pretty streamlined as far as the new recycling receptacles would be geo-tagged, and then Republic Services would pick up the materials.
Okay, so the recycling receptacles are only part of the project.
Amber, you have to introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm Amber Graves, and I'm a member of the Meridian Mayor's Youth Advisory Council, and the artwork is only a part of the, or part of the piece of the puzzle. We obviously have the recycling receptacles to go along with it. So there's five steps that we would take for the artwork. So we do a call to artist, we would determine the winning artwork, obtain artist permission, wrap the receptacles with the artwork, and then present to the Arts Commission, which is not necessarily last, but that would be kind of in conjunction and at the same time as the other steps. So for our call to artists, we've talked a little bit with the Arts Commission and what that would need to look like, but our criteria would be that the artist was a high school student, that the artwork would include the word recycle or the recycling symbol, that the artwork would be two-dimensional, that way we could wrap the receptacles with it, that an artist may submit up to five pieces of artwork and a picture of the piece may be submitted by email, and that's just how we would collect the artwork and then determine what we would use. And we would determine the winning artwork as a council, so we would need to decide if we want to do that in a small committee or if we would do it as a general council, but we will decide that when the time comes. So obtaining artwork's permission, we talked a little bit with the Arts Commission about that, and we would just need to sign an agreement with them, but the Arts Commission is willing to help us with that. And wrapping the receptacles, we've talked with Art Sign Design, and they do a vinyl wrap around the receptacles, and that's what we would be going with, and the cost estimate is about $236 per receptacle. And as I mentioned kind of earlier, that we would present to the Arts Commission, and this is to get on the maintenance rotation, so the Arts Commission has electrical boxes around town that they already service and rewrap, so by presenting to the Arts Commission, we would be asking them to put the receptacles on their maintenance rotation. So as far as pricing goes, we're thinking about $1,190 per receptacle before installation, and then $236 for the wrapping of the receptacle, which brings the total price of each receptacle to $1,426. So within our budget, we think about 13 receptacles.
So again, I'm Jelena, Madam Chair and councilmembers. The reason why we think that this is important is because, like I stated earlier, recycling's really an issue, especially in our city core. We don't see a lot of recycling availability for that foot traffic and those recyclable goods, so we'll increase the amount of recycling that occurs, along with creating an aesthetically pleasing city core through this artwork and kind of voicing the youth through that as well, so that they can show their artwork and our desire to continue recycling as well. Our bottom line and essentially the main point for all of this is that we want the youth of Meridian to create a long-lasting and tangible representation of our desire to better the community in this specific case through that recycling.
At this point, we'd like to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Carson, Jelena, and Amber. Counsel, any questions for our MYAC students?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
One question, great presentation and information. Is there a separate cost for the installation itself?
Yeah, so I can take that one. We've talked a lot with the Parks and Recreation Department of the Meridian City, and they've said that we might be able to partner with them to install the receptacles, so at that point, there would be no additional expense directly to our project, but that is also why we left some room in our budget for the installation, but that's definitely something that we still have to explore.
Yes, Ms. Mylum?
Great presentation, you guys. I have a couple of questions. So it looks like you've spoken with Republic Services. Did you specifically speak to them regarding the style of can to the ease of their job of retrieving the materials?
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman Malone. So we did talk to Republic Services about picking up the trash, or my goodness, I apologize again, the recyclable materials, and they did not say that the removable cart was actually necessary, so they didn't have any real huge concerns about collecting recyclable materials, but as I mentioned earlier, the receptacle that we have selected does have a removable cart, which makes it really easy for the truck to use its hydraulic arm to pick it up.
They didn't have a problem with it? They really, they understand the type of can that you're using, it's okay with them?
Yeah.
Okay. Madam Mayor, follow up. The other thing that we are experiencing, and you mentioned contamination, is a huge problem, particularly in public spaces. It's a problem in our own homes, and it's even worse when you go out into the public and people just putting whatever in, and especially with the way that recycling has changed so dramatically over the last couple of years, there's not a lot of materials that can actually be recycled through general recycling, through our mixed co-mingling recycling. So are you going to have a label on each can showing just the specific items that can be put in? Are you going to limit it to just one or two things? How are you going to do that?
Yes. Well, thank you again, Councilwoman Malone. So we have talked about that a lot as a group, and one of the reasons we liked the Secure receptacle was because it had different sized openings, so we definitely want to look towards an opening that, you know, says recycling, perhaps round or rectangular. And then as far as like a symbol on the receptacle, that's kind of why we made one of the requirements be that it has the recycling symbol, but then additionally, we've discussed, you know, making a list of items that can actually be recycled, and we feel that that's something that's very doable, where we're going to be working with the vinyl, we can customize it to our city's needs and requirements.
I think that would be really important, critical to the success of this program that you're presenting, because the general public doesn't necessarily know what can go in, because the list has changed, and it's changed, and it's changed. So my recommendation would be to keep it limited to four or five things and just make a list of, you know, the most, probably the most popular things that you would hope to get in there, soda pop bottles, cans, cardboard, something like that. And so that's something that you could probably work with Republic Services on as well, as far as what they want to keep out. No, plastic water bottles are not recyclable, so that's one of the largest contaminants that we have in this type of a situation.
Just something to add, Madam Mayor and Councilmen, I just wanted to point out too that we're talking about putting our receptacles next to trashcans, so I think that's another big issue with contamination, is speaking from personal experience, if there's a recycling receptacle right next to a trashcan, I'm not just going to throw my trash in the recycling receptacle if I know the appropriate places to put it. So that's what we're talking about doing, that way we can kind of avoid that contamination problem if it's putting it in a recycling receptacle versus doing nothing with it. I don't think we're going to be having that issue just because we will be putting them next to trashcans.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, that, and not to be, I'm not being hard on you, but it's not a matter of just sheer laziness, it's about understanding. I yesterday witnessed a mayor put in plastic.
It wasn't me.
It wasn't, it was not our mayor, it was from a different city, and I'm not going to name any names, but not even misunderstand, and we see all this, but with so many changes, putting plastic utensils into the recycling bin, and they're not, they're not accepted in there anymore where they used to be. So, yeah, I think just a short list would probably be really beneficial to actually having a list of what can go in there, even if it's next to a trashcan, just because people just don't think, it seems like it should be recyclable. So we want it to be, so we put it in there because we want it to be recyclable, but all it does is contaminate recycling and mess up the whole process. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Burnt?
Great presentation, thank you so much. You guys always do a great job. One quick question though, have you guys looked outside the core of downtown as possible sites? Sounds like all of these are going to be downtown in the downtown core. Have you looked at other areas outside the core that would make sense to have these receptacles?
Their focus was on the downtown core and in that walkable area.
Okay. I get that.
Yeah, I mean, thank you for your question, Councilman Burnt. We've, when we were planning kind of our project, we did talk about the possibility of parks in the Meridian area, but yeah, in the end, we did decide to go with just the Meridian core as far as some of the requirements for our project, and then also the permitting to place the receptacles as well.
Also with our budget, whereas we have only 13 receptacles that we'd be able to put, we think that the density is really important to kind of creating that habit, especially, sorry, for people who walk the area often so that they can get used to that system, like Councilwoman brought up.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
Do you guys have an idea about how long the wraps will last? In terms of future funding to rewrap them, how, what's the lifespan on them?
Okay, to address that question, the vinyl lasts up to 10 years, but as I mentioned earlier, we would talk to the Arts Commission about getting on their maintenance rotation. They replace all their vinyl wraps every five years. So if we present to the Arts Commission and get on their maintenance rotation, then that's not anything that we would need to worry about anymore. If we were on their maintenance rotation, then they would worry about rewrapping the receptacles, and that wouldn't be anything that we would need to worry about anymore.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
I guess I'm going to push that back to you a little bit then. That's something that we as a council though would have to worry about, and $236 times 13 is, you know, about $2,500. So, well, that's something, when you were off kicking butt in college, a future council will have to rationalize the decision about, do we continue to spend money on a vinyl wrap for a project that was proposed five years ago? And so I guess my question to you would be, with this project, what was more of the priority, getting recycling out in our community in our downtown core or getting art in our downtown core?
I guess to speak to that question, for me, I think it's more about the artwork, especially our theme this year was focused on downtown and getting more foot traffic in downtown, and so I think the artwork is a really key part of that. Also, youth involvement is always a big thing when we're talking about participatory budgeting. So I think being able to involve the high school students of Meridian and asking them to design artwork for these receptacles is a big thing, and I think that provides a voice for the youth that they don't currently have. So I think the artwork is a very important piece of this, and we already have, you know, electrical boxes with vinyl wraps on them that are already being replaced, so this is not, it would add to the expense, but it's not a new expense, it's already something that's being done, so it's adding to it, but it's not anything new and something the Arts Commission is already doing.
Madam Mayor, one more.
Mr. Cavanagh?
One of the things that I love about participatory budgeting is you as an organization are kind of wrestling with the pros and cons, and so I guess my last question would be is, would you support reduced funding for participatory budgeting in the future to cover the added cost of wrapping these in the future?
So obviously, we don't advocate for like reducing the funds for participatory budgeting because it opens up our opportunity for proposals, but when we talked to the Arts Commission and we talked about possibly proposing this to them, they constantly want to increase the amount of electrical boxes being wrapped, so in this case, it would be kind of a surrogate, so regardless, that growth would be happening.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
Outstanding answers. Great questions. Even better answers, man, you guys nailed it, I think. What's going to happen in five years, who knows, but I'm ready, willing, and able to bet on you guys and the work you've done. You're sending a message, not only of providing that voice for the youth, but you work together to try and provide an opportunity for our downtown to be more walkable, to promote recycling and address issues that are important to the youth, which is the whole point of participatory budgeting. If in five years, they're not going to be rewrapped, if future council can decide that, it doesn't negate the value of the recycling opportunity downtown. Quite frankly, I think they will be. I think the art incorporation is brilliant as well, so I'm wholly supportive of what you've done, appreciate the work that you did to get to this point and the due diligence that's necessary to make this have a chance to be successful, so. Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton?
I will move and do move to approve MYAC's participatory budgeting proposal and request as presented, and I'm sure we'll be getting updates as you proceed and prepare for installation. Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Cavanagh?
I guess I just would challenge you as a body to partner with our downtown businesses, and maybe there is an opportunity for sponsorship, so that these businesses that are wanting, they're seeing the benefit of this art, perhaps can maybe sponsor and help offset the cost of the taxpayers, and I think it just continues to provide a value add to the great work that you're doing.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Burnt?
Awesome idea. I echo the sentiments from Counsel, Councilwoman Borton, and others. I like this. I, I, I like this idea so much, I think that we, we probably should maybe look at expanding this maybe a little bit, maybe to a couple of big parks, just to see how it works, you know? I mean, I know that's, that's not your focus and you're focusing on the downtown, but maybe talk about that a little bit more to see if that would be a possibility to put in a couple of big parks, just to see how it does. Because I think, I think it would be awesome, you know, both for the recycling aspect of it and also the artwork that comes with it as well.
Maybe that's next year's proposal. Any other comments? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavner. Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
You got all ayes. Congratulations.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I know you guys are a little ways away, but you know, could plant a seed, start thinking about a city council run. We could use your, your youth and enthusiasm.
Have to be 18.
Yeah. As I said, in a couple of years, it's planting a seed. Gotta grow it, water it.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Great. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers, for your involvement in the participatory budgeting. Next, we're going to talk, next, we're going to talk about the National League of Cities Conference and two of our executive council members' experiences during the trip, how they benefit from it and their experiences.
Hi. So again, I'm Jaylana Corsi. I'm the Teen Activities Vice Chair for MYAC. Overall, I think that the NLC trip was really beneficial, not only for the youth who attended, but also to bring back to the city. I think it's a great investment for kind of building us as leaders, but also bringing the ideas from around the nation. Personally, one of my main takeaways was looking at what kind of problems we choose to tackle. In discussion with youth delegates and adult delegates from different cities, a lot of them face very insurmountable issues, but they still try to tackle it. So personally, I think that kind of looking at those and looking at more long-term things that may outlive our high school experience and live on through MYAC could be something that we could work towards, especially as I continue with next year in MYAC. A lot of the issues that they brought up included theft with cars and also human trafficking. And they were all very aware that they would not solve these problems, but they still took it on, took it on fully and were able to kind of not necessarily quantify the impact regarding results, but quantify it regarding impacts on people and testimonies in that scenario. So personally, that's what I got from this National League of Cities. And I think that context nationally can be really beneficial for MYAC, and it was very beneficial for me personally.
Madam Mayor and Councilmembers, again, I'm Amber Graves, and I had the privilege of attending National League of Cities this year, and it was so much fun. I thought it was a blast. Also, it was very educational. Just to kind of add on to what Jaylana said, one thing that I personally took away was how the other cities around the nation are looking to lower the voting age in their cities and their states. That's something that we kind of looked at a little bit this year with our legislation. And although it was successful, we didn't get the outcome that we were looking for, and we will continue to pursue that. But it was extremely valuable for me to be able to hear what other councils are doing and how they're approaching that problem. And I think that's valuable, valuable perspective that's hard to gain, and it was a very valuable experience for me to go and hear from them. And not only about lowering the voting age, but other things that they're doing in their cities that we can take back and implement here.
Thank you, Amber.
Great. So in our upcoming events, we have Go Red for Women Day. That's coming, that's coming up tomorrow. MYAC's partnering with American Heart Association, and we're having a luncheon with the, Go Red for Women with the American Heart Association, where we're going to be talking about our experiences. We're highlighting our Deschamps CPR Day, and we're spreading the word about MYAC and the youth involvement that we have in Meridian to local businesses. And then we're also going to be assisting the American Heart Association. Also, we have MYAC elections coming up very soon, on Monday, April 22nd, where we're going to vote in a whole new council, and everybody's going to be able to participate and have their voice heard if they wasn't heard as much as they wanted to in general election, or general council. And they want a change in the council. All the seniors are going to be going, and people who were in the council this year, who were on the executive council, will be running for the positions that they want to be running for. And then also in the works right now, we have the Suicide Prevention Run. We, if you remember from last year, it was a great success, and we're going to bring it back. It's going to be at May 11th at Kleiner Park, and we're working on more details, which I'll bring to you as fast as we have them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Counsel, any questions?
And then one more thing, I also have Do the Right stickers for all the council, council members, if that's all right.
No, you get more than one.
Thank you.
So just, Ben, if you could give a brief overview too of Do the Right and maybe what some of the activities are that MYAC is, is doing.
Yes. So Do the Right Day is coming up this Thursday on April 4th. It's a movement of compassion for everybody to do something kind to the, to the person on their right, the person on their left, and just make sure that everybody feels heard. Also, I have flyers for everybody.
You can give them to the clerk.
If I could give those to the clerk.
He will make sure they're given out.
But it's a movement, it's a movement of compassion for everybody to feel loved and just a general sense of compassion and kindness on this day where, where everyone can exercise their care for each other. And it's really a moment of reflection for everybody and realize all the nice things that we do for each other and try to take a moment, step back and appreciate everything that we have here.
So how can the council help with Do the Right?
Well, Do the Right Day, we have our student ambassadors bring to their schools all the stickers, all the flyers. We have large posters that we put up in every school with little notes. I know that I was an at-large ambassador last year, so at all the schools that I represented, we had posters with notes, and they were tearaways. And they were one thing that you could do right for the person next to you or the person in school. We even got teachers involved as well, where we had to go up to teachers and tell them, tell them how much we appreciated them. All the teachers that were involved were super excited. All the teachers at my school and the schools that I represented, I remember telling me that they still have their stickers on the laptops, and it's spreading every single year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us, and I, I love how active and passionate you all are, in particular about your participatory budgeting project. And we do hope that you will come back with the locations and the proposed artwork that you want to wrap with.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, City Council.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
As part of that, I see Jody St. Martin in the audience. Hats off to you. Thank you for your work with MYAC throughout the year and helping shepherd the PVP process through the fall and, and up to this point. So a lot of their success comes with your oversight and assistance. So thank you for that. Good job.
And Mr. Dom as well. He helps with the Government Affairs Subcommittee. So thank you.
Well done.
Okay. Item B is a public hearing for the proposed parks fees, and I will open this public hearing and turn this over to Colin.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So I am here tonight to present our tri-annual activity guide fees, this one being our summer activity guide. That'll be coming out here next Friday. And so we have a, a long list of classes that will be offered this summer. We also have some fees on the end there related to the opening of Discovery Park, as well as some updated tournament fees for our sports leagues and a couple others. And so I, I'll just stand for any questions that you might have about any of the fees that are on the list.
Thank you, Colin. Counsel, any questions?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to provide testimony on this item? Okay. Counsel, seeing none.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Mylum.
I move that we approve Resolution Number 19-2134.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 19-2134. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Mylum.
Aye.
Councilmember Burnt.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Kavner.
Aye.
Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes. Okay. We did have a request to continue Item 8C to May 7th. And I will ask staff if they wanted to give the basis of that request.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, the applicant is here tonight. If you would like an explanation from the applicant, but from what I understand, the, this hearing date didn't work for them.
Okay. I guess it would be nice to hear from the applicant. Is there any member of the public here that is here on this particular agenda item? Okay. Thank you, sir. Yes. If the applicant could please share. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Larnin Bailey with Devco Development, address 4824 West Fairview Avenue, Boise, Idaho.
Thank you.
And I, I apologize for requesting the continuance. We had some members of our team who were tied up with other things tonight, a couple on vacation and then some other issues. And so we knew this, you know, when, when this was scheduled and we talked to staff, but your code requires us to be heard within a certain amount of days. So we needed to have this meeting and then continue out. So we, this didn't just come about, we knew this when we were scheduled and we let your staff know, but because of your code, we needed to be scheduled to be heard. And so that, that's why we had to ask for the, to be deferred to the 7th.
Thank you. Mr. Borton? Did you have a comment? Mr. Clerk, I know we've talked about this before, and there has been discussion on extending that, changing the ordinance, and it is in process. Where are we at with that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I know that it is with the UDC Working Group, and it's part of the overall UDC changes that will be coming before the commission and the council in the next little while. I don't know the exact timeframe on that, but it's a part of the overall changes happening within the UDC.
Is, is there a process that we can, or a process that you use when you have these requests and to share with our citizens so they don't spend their evening in vain to let them know that although it was set for a particular date, because of our code, the applicant still cannot make that, it would be recommended for a different date? How can you do that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I believe when we found out that this date wouldn't work, we had already started with the noticing process. However, because of Nextdoor, there's no cost to, to making changes and notifications with Nextdoor. I do believe we did use Nextdoor to send out an update saying this, there's a request to be continued to this date. So that's generally the tool that we use because we can, on a, on a moment's notice, use Nextdoor to push out a lot of information.
Can it also be noted on the agenda?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have discussed that before. I know that this council has brought up that request, and I know Mr. Neri has weighed in that while it's okay to, to do that, and he can correct me if I'm wrong, while the, if we put that on there, it isn't official until the council takes action on that. So we don't want to confuse anyone if they see that, and then all of a sudden the council didn't make that decision, and now we've confused other members of the public.
Caleb, is, is this something that can be considered to bring separate from UDC? Does it need to be packaged or bundled with the other changes of the UDC?
So Madam Mayor, members of the council, we're ready to go. Bill Parsons this week should have the application submitted, so there's no reason at this point to pull it out. Some things have been piggybacked on that application, and it's, it's, it's lagged, and I apologize for that. But it is moving forward, as the clerk mentioned. I don't have a specific date yet, but that transmittled this week. We've had some recent communications with the BCA, so, but, but really at this point, the application is 99% ready to be submitted this week and will be, it does need to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission first here, but eight weeks or so should be back before you, for a hearing. So I don't anticipate this situation happening again. We'll cross our fingers anyways that it doesn't, but again, no reason to pull it out and process it separately at this point.
Well, so counsel, there's a, I mean, there's an expense to the applicant that they notice it for a date, and then they have to renotice it or repost it. I guess it can be at our expense because it's our ordinance. Any comments from counsel? Any questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
And I apologize to the citizen that joined us to make comment. It is an inconvenience, and we apologize.
Madam Mayor, if I may, just get some clear direction from counsel, if it is the will of the council to do a full renotice, reposting at the city's expense, including, I know that the council has considered before if the sign needs to be reposted on, on the site, while that is generally at the applicant's expense, we've done it where the council's decided to do it at our expense as well. So I just want to make sure that that's clear on the record so we know what we're doing moving forward for May 7th.
Counsel?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
It would be at, at our expense since we forced the compressed schedule in this case, so.
That's what we'll do.
I agree.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Is, is the public hearing open? Are we okay to take action?
It is open, and I would entertain a motion to continue.
Madam Mayor, I move that we continue H 2018-0129 to May 7th, 2019, and for the city to cover costs of the reposting of the property. Second.
Okay. I have a motion, and it seems like a very popular second, to continue this to May 7th with the city to bear the cost of full noticing, both by mail and changing of the sign. Okay? All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All ayes, mush carry. And thank you. Okay. Item 8D is a public hearing, continued from February 19th for H 2019-0011. I will ask our city attorney to, this, this was continued, and if you can kind of set the parameters of the discussion for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So what you have for you are three items for Villasport. One is a request for council review of some of the CUP conditions that were granted by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The applicant has requested some of that to be reviewed by this council. You also have a request to modify the existing development agreement for this project to incorporate the, this project into a new development agreement for the property. And third, you have a request for a variance, and that was the main reason that this was continued to this date. There are some setback standards in the UDC that can only be adjusted by variance, not by CUP. And so those items are for you. And you'll note on the agenda, as well as in the staff report, they are mentioned a couple of times. So just to help everyone at home that's keeping score, keep track, the items under F, so there's two sections of the Uniform Development Code that are related to city codes 11-4-3-2A1 and 11-4-3-2A2 that are specifically variance requests regarding dimensional standards and locations of the building in relation to property lines of the adjoining residential properties. Those are also listed under the CUP. CUP, so that was the ones where they, the CUP couldn't be used to alter those. So you are being asked to look at some CUP considerations. After further review, part of the previous discussion was regarding the hours of operation, and whether or not this specific standard in one section of our UDC code was superseding the general standard, which allows you to vary the hours of operation by CUP. It does not. So you can consider the request by the applicant for the change in the hours of operation under the CUP that was granted by Planning and Zoning, except not for that specific request. They granted a different request for hours of operation under the CUP and did not grant this one. You can consider that as the applicant is requesting you to do. So you have three separate things, all related to the same project. One is the CUP, one is the DA, and one is the variance. And so, if you have other questions, like Sonya can probably answer the specifics of the project, but if you have other questions about the framework of what the legal questions were being asked tonight, I could certainly answer those.
Counsel, any questions regarding the framework and, and what is before you tonight to, uh, make decisions upon?
Mad-
To understand what Mr. Neri just said, basically.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
Yes, is the, the quick answer.
Thank you.
Um, but before, before we begin, I wanted to put on the record that I was absent at the previous meeting, uh, so in preparation for today's meeting, I was able to review the, the YouTube video of the prior hearing, as well as the complete record of all the written material that's been presented, um, staff reports, comments, up to and including through the variance application, all of which is before the council now. So I feel like I'm well-versed and up to speed in everything that's transpired up to today, so I feel comfortable participating in, in all three of these combined hearings. So, wanted to make that known. And, and as part of that, getting my head around these applications, it appeared, and from Mr. Neri's comments, that of the assorted requests of the applicant, the council has the legal authority to grant or deny each of them based on the various findings that are necessary. There's nothing more precluded from granting.
That is correct, Councilman Borton, that is correct. There is nothing that you cannot consider based upon the material that's in front of you.
Okay.
Okay, with that, with that said, I, I will, um, also note for the record as we, um, listen to the Sadie Creek, um, Commons, uh, development and discussion. Items A, D, E, and F are open in this public hearing and will accept all comments, um, taken at once. Okay? Sonya.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, at the previous hearing, you did hear the request for city council review and the development agreement modification. Would you like me to recap on those tonight, or would you like me to move straight to the variance?
Counsel, I, I think it'd be helpful for a recap, and I will just note to the public, um, the process for the public hearing, if this is your first, um, time here, uh, staff will open with a proposal about, um, the applications in front of council. Uh, we will ask for the applicant's comments. They have fifteen minutes. We will then open it up for public comment. You have three minutes, uh, to present your, your comments, your concerns, uh, your questions, and, um, you have one chance to do that. At, at the end of the public comment, uh, period, we will ask the applicant to, uh, respond and give comments, and, um, then it's in the ball, or it's in the city council's court to, um, follow up with any questions for staff applicant or any of those that testified before they make a decision. And please note, take note, as Councilman Borton mentioned, there's, um, a great deal of, of record on this that, um, city council does take into consideration as they make their decision. So Sonya, I will turn this over to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So I'll just start from the beginning for those that may not have been present at the last hearing. Uh, this site consists of eleven point three nine acres of land. It's owned CG and is located off of the southwest corner of North Eagle Road and East Eustick Road. Uh, a little history, uh, this property was annexed back in two thousand five with a development agreement under the name of Sadie Creek Commons. The previously approved, um, concept plan was for a mixed-use development. I think I have that here. Um, yeah, upper, uh, left-hand corner there. Uh, mixed-use development consisting of approximately a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of commercial, retail, restaurant, and office uses on fifteen point three three acres of land. Uh, three accesses were approved via Eustick Road, and one right-in, right-out access was approved via North Eagle Road. The provisions in the development agreement pertain to that development plan and is applicable to the subject property, as well as to the out parcel at the northeast corner of the site. The comprehensive plan mixed, uh, future land use map designation is mixed-use regional. So I'll just go through the city council review, uh, request of the commission's decision on the conditional use permit first. Um, and I'll only cover those that, um, the variance is not requested for. So there's three of them. Um, first, uh, the two point one A, that is, um, part of the variance request. So I'll skip to number two point one C, which requires, um, if an outdoor speaker system is proposed, the location of such shall be depicted on the plans at least one hundred feet from all residential districts unless waived through approval of a conditional use permit, per UDC eleven dash three A dash thirteen. The applicant is requesting a waiver from this standard as allowed by the UDC through a conditional use permit. In the alternative of a waiver, the applicant requests the one hundred feet is interpreted to be from the adjacent residence, excuse me, residential structures rather than district. Next is number two point one D, and that is the subject of the variance request as well. Moving on to number two point two, the hours of operation of the athletic club and spa are limited to the hours between four AM and midnight, um, twelve AM, uh, for indoor activities, and six o'clock AM to eleven PM for outdoor activities, with outdoor music limited to the hours between nine AM and ten PM, as approved with this application. The applicant is requesting earlier hours of operation for out, outdoor activities of five AM instead of six AM, Monday through Friday, seasonally, consistent with number two point one D. And finally, number two point ten, uh, the applicant shall work with planning staff and ACHD to create a crosswalk for pedestrian access to the facility from the west parking lot. Uh, the applicant is requesting the following text is added, um, if permitted by ACHD. In the event ACHD will not allow a crosswalk, uh, staff is amenable to this change. Next is the development agreement modification request to remove the subject property from the terms of the existing agreement for Sadie Creek Commons and enter into a new agreement for the proposed development. The proposed concept plan is there on the right. Uh, the new concept plan, um, and building elevations depict a ninety-nine thousand square foot two-story building for an athletic club and spa, and a approximate fifteen thousand three hundred square foot retail building. Um, that fronts on Eagle Road. Associated parking for the proposed uses is also depicted. Lastly, the variance is, um, to UDC eleven dash four dash three dash two A one. That standard requires all outdoor recreation areas and structures that are not fully enclosed shall maintain a minimum setback of one hundred feet from any abutting residential districts. I would just like to note, in the staff report, the distances, um, noted by staff are, are a little wonky. They were based on, um, the original site plan submitted with the application. So, and the applicant submitted, uh, another plan to me this afternoon. So they, they do vary a little bit, but in your decision, please, um, just note this, this site plan that's shown before you tonight. The adult lap pool, the concrete pool deck-
Sorry, Sonya?
Ah, Sonya, hold on.
I don't mean to interrupt. I just want to get, make sure that I'm, I'm clear on this. This site plan that is on the screen now is the one you want us referencing?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
So the, the pool area here, um, is the green area right here. The pool deck area where they're seating at, um, surrounds it. And then, this is the outdoor turf area here that we're referencing. So, the, the pool, the concrete pool deck and the turf area depicted on the plan are within one hundred feet of the residential district to the south, which adjoins the southern property line at six feet to the pool deck area and eleven feet to the turf area. Uh, staff believes the intent of this standard is to have a minimum one hundred foot separation between residential and outdoor recreation uses. If the setback were measured from the nearest residential property line, the setback to the pool deck would be seventy-seven feet, and to the turf area would be sixty feet, um, per the revised plan shown. Other unique factors, uh, that exist on this site is the residential zoning in this area is not typical, and that it stretches from the residential area to the south, across the street, and includes a common area which abuts this site. Uh, typically zoning goes to the center line of adjacent streets. So this, this, um, zoning map here depicts what I was just stating. Um, typically, it would go to the center line right here, and in this case, um, it goes to actually to the far edge of the street and includes the, the common area in these areas. Um, this irregularity creates a wider area, um, setback, um, than is typical in this situation. Outdoor, uh, recreation uses. And then additionally, uh, the milk lateral bisects this site and lies to the north of the proposed building, which restricts the development area of this site, um, and creates a hardship. The second request for a variance is to UDC eleven dash four dash three dash two A two, which requires no outdoor event or activity center, shall be located within fifty feet of any property line, and shall operate only between the hours of six AM and eleven PM. The adult lap pool, uh, concrete pool deck area and the outdoor turf area depicted on the site plan are within fifty feet of the southern property line at approximately eleven feet to the turf area and six feet to the pool deck area. The applicant is requesting reduction in the setback accordingly, as shown. Staff believes the intent of this requirement is to have a fifty-foot separation between the adjacent property line, um, use and the outdoor activity center, which in this case is greater than fifty feet. Staff recommends council consider the intent of this standard when considering the variance request. And just again, as a reminder, um, in order to grant a variance, council must make the following findings. The variance shall not grant a right or special privilege that is not otherwise allowed in the district. The variance relieves an undue hardship because of characteristics of the site, and the variance shall not be detrimental to the pub, public health, safety, and welfare. If council finds granting the proposed variance is appropriate, additional buffering measures such as an eight-foot tall fence or wall and/or dense landscaping consisting of a mix of conifers and deciduous trees and shrubs should be considered as mitigation to further buffer the adjacent residential uses. Testimony has been received from Jeff Verba, um, Vice President of the Jackson Square homeowners Association. He is against the proposed development. David Durfee and Steve Grant, and they are both against the hours of operation earlier than six AM for outdoor uses. Out there, and the only outstanding issue for council, um, is the access proposed via Center Point Way along the project's west boundary from Eustick Road and from Cajun Lane to the south. Um, another access is also proposed at the northeast corner of the site by Eustick Road and Arterial Street, which requires council approval to a waiver to UDC eleven three eight three, which limits access via Arterial Streets. Council should include a decision on the waiver in their motion. Staff is recommending approval of the development agreement modification and denial of the variance request. Staff will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Sonya. Counsel, any questions for staff at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
In, in review of the record, I didn't see anything that would indicate any opposition to the requested waiver, uh, as to the access issue. Is that one of the also not in contention issues?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Councilman Borton, um, I am not aware of any written testimony that would, yeah, prohibit that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay, is the applicant here? Good evening. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Ma- Madam Mayor, members of council. My name's Tamara Thompson, four six two East Shore Drive in Eagle. I'm sorry, I'm with the land group. We'll go through, um, just real quickly, the highlights from, from last time. Um, again, we're at the southwest corner of Eagle and Eustick. It's eleven point four acres. The area in blue is the, um, property in question, and it excludes the hard corner, which is roughly three point five acres. The milk lateral does bisect the property, although it's, um, been tiled just recently, was completed. We had to have that completed by March fifteenth because irrigation water will be entering the ditches in the next couple of weeks. The site is bounded by roads on three sides. On the north is Eustick, on the east side is Eust- is Eagle Road, and on the south is Picard Street. Center Point Way runs through the center, or through the, the western portion of the property. Currently, the site has two direct accesses to Eustick, and our proposal, and you'll see when we get to the site plan, so when ACHD did the improvements along Eustick a decade or so ago, they provided the access points that were approved with the previous development agreement, and there's utility stubs here, and there's utility stubs in Center Point as well. Our proposals, um, when you see the site plan, will be to close both of these accesses and have, uh, one combined access. And s- as Sonya mentioned, the site, um, enjoys a future land use map designation of medium den, or I'm sorry, of mixed use, and it is currently zoned, uh, general commercial, which is the CG zone, and I just highlighted that for you here. That is the largest scale and broadest mix of retail, office, service, and light industrial uses. And, um, here I clipped out just the dimensional standards, that it has a maximum height of sixty-five feet by the UDC, by the, by your development code. The property, um, for the current development agreement, ha- allows anything within the, uh, development code that is an approved use for the CG. Those are the uses that are approved. And as Sonya showed you, this is the current development agreement concept plan, and, um, just some highlights of that on the side is, it's approved up to a hundred and fifty thousand two hundred and two square feet of retail and restaurant. Um, with that, you would have loading docks adjacent to the southern property line, backup buzzers. There's no limits at all on, um, hours of deliveries in the development agreement, and again, buildings up to sixty-five feet tall. So that's approved, um, anything that's allowed per the current development agreement. And here's our current site plan. So we have, um, the Villasport, which, um, today, with me, I didn't mention this, I have, um, Jeff Bowers, who's our legal counsel. He will be presenting, and Mike Fassler with Villasport is also here today. Um, just to give a quick overview of the property, um, I'll show you here. So this street right here is called Cajun, and then Picard Lane runs, um, be- to the south of the property and then Center Point Way. So this is standing at Cajun, looking west along, uh, Picard, and one thing I didn't mention last time, and I want to make sure it's clear, that all of these trees are on the southern property for the residential. These are not going to be touched. So these remain, they, they exist today, and they will remain. There's, um, I think there was some confusion with some of the neighbors when we had our, our additional neighborhood meeting. And then this is just a little bit further back, looking down Picard, so you can see the existing fence line and, um, the benefit of a decade or so of, of trees growing. And then this is looking west, um, along Picard again, but at Center Point. And you can see the large, open space at that corner, which also is a, um, detention basin for the ACHD roads. And down Center Point just a little bit, looking towards Coles, and one of the, things I want to point out is the power lines. These have gone in recently. The overhead lines have always been there, but this big mini substation that I call it is, um, is, is fairly recent. And I'm going to turn it over to Mike real quick to go over some Villasport highlights for you.
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Mike Fassler. I'm here on behalf of Villasport. My address is one five zero Pelican Way, Centerfell, California. Villasport currently is a family-owned and family-operated company. We currently have five clubs operating across the western United States. Um, we're in Beaverton, Oregon. We're also in Colorado Springs. Uh, we're two clubs that are construction, one in Roseville, California. We're two clubs that are construction, one in Roseville, California, and one in Katy, Texas, Houston metropolitan area. These aren't your typical gymnasium or gym or athletic clubs. These are something of a resort amenity and really our community amenity in the cities in which they are located. We pride ourselves on being a family, focusing on the families. About two-thirds of our memberships are family memberships. People forge relationships at these clubs. It's not just go work out and go home. It's actually a kind of a resort down the street from your house where you could spend time. And we have a huge children's programming part of our mission, over 12,000 square feet dedicated just to children, Villa Kids Center, indoor/outdoor space. We also, in creating these clubs, we create over 250 jobs in the local communities in addition to the construction jobs that are created by these Villasports. So let me kind of go through really quickly the club. I know I did this last time, so I'll go pretty quickly through it. They're high-end athletic clubs. They're four swimming pools and an indoor/outdoor whirlpool. It's kind of a signature feature of our clubs. Offering, the pools offer swim training programs for age group swimmers, as well as swim classes for the youth and for adults. There's also water aerobics, those kind of things. Focus, as I'd said before, is on the children. There's two, one of the features, a lot of water features in our outdoor recreational pool. There's also an indoor recreational pool that I showed earlier. And then there's an outdoor adult swim area, which features a whirlpool. And there's also an outdoor adult lap swim pool. There's outdoor bar, and there's also a grill outside. So it's more than just a normal kind of athletic club. Inside, we have a spa, Cubville Spa. It's open to the public, not just members, but the public as well. And it's a full-featured spa, offering facials, massages, pedicures, manicures, those kind of things. And inside, you also see the locker rooms. There's a family locker room, there's a men's locker and a women's locker room. These are all high-end kind of materials, kind of inviting atmosphere to spend time and relax. While the parents, parents can relax while their kids are being taken care of in the Villa Kids area. And of course, part of athletic club is having fitness as part of the focus. Here you see we have spin classes, spin studio. We have five X Group X studios in each of our clubs, over 120 cardio machines. We offer more than 180 Group X classes each week. And full-size NBA regulation basketball courts. There's also a, there's also a separate gym with basketball courts dedicated just to children, the Villa Kids. And in the basketball court runs adult leagues as well as kids' leagues. And then you have more of the Group X, so you have the yoga studio, you've got Pilates and other fitness equipment. And then Villa Kids, so over 12,000 square feet dedicated just to kids, indoor/outdoor space. There's five different stations that the children go through. They spend about 25 minutes in each station. It's highly interactive, lots of hands-on activity. It's not just going and putting your child in front of a TV. They're actually learning. There's a dance studio, there's an art studio. They're doing lots of activities. So the kids actually end up bringing the parents to the club. It's actually a great thing for us. You'll see more of the kids at play. There's some outdoor space they're playing, they're playing the basketball gym dedicated just to children. As you see, there's also cafes, feature of our clubs. This is open to the public as well, so if people come in, grab a snack, grab a smoothie, grab coffee and go, or they're going to sit down and watch the local sports on TV. And as part of our programming, we also do a lot of public, community events offered to our members primarily. There's a, there's a Great Easter, Great Egg Hunt. There's also Daddy Daughter Dance. There's rentals for birthday parties, different kind of holiday activities, breakfast with Santa. And we also do an open house every year where we invite all the local schools, both private and public, to kind of present what they offer to the, to local parents, so they can figure out where their kids should go to school. And this is open to the public. It's just one, one time a year that we do this open forum. And that's the floor plan of a typical Villasport club. You got the two, this is the indoor area, so two indoor swimming pools. And then you've got the locker rooms on the first floor and the basketball courts. And then this will show the second floor, all the Group X studios are on the second floor right here, and the cardio equipment and fitness part of it. So I will turn it over to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tamara Thompson again. This is the exterior elevations of the Villasport facility. I want to point out the top level, the parapet wall height is 36 feet. There is an entry element that goes up to 48 feet. So 36 feet is the majority of the building, and that entry element, which you can see at the very, at the opening, goes up to 30, 48, sorry, 48. So some of the site constraints that we have, I mentioned before, we have the Center Point Way here, we have all the Idaho power lines and the easements for those along our Eustick frontage. This is a cross-access, so we've worked with this property owner on the corner so that we don't have two separate access points, that we would combine those into one. And with that, we have the cross-access. And then we also have cross-access to the south that we can get to the Eagle, Eagle Road access. So that, that's a third-party agreement that was entered into when the development agreement for this originally went through. And then for the Milk Lateral is this one here. So you can see it used to go a little bit more diagonal through there, and we've relocated that to where we have to keep the same invert location, so the, it's a gravity line, so it still has to flow. So we were able to move that a little bit to the north, but not a whole lot, because you have to keep that same elevation where it exits the property. So for the south property line adjacent to the neighbors, some areas that we didn't have a lot of detail on last time is just what that would look like. So we've talked to our landscape architects, and we were proposing a six-foot fence. We're coming back to you with an eight-foot fence. So what we're looking at here would be this open-style metal, but we would put fabric on that, so those, that fabric would damper the noise. And then the two different types of columnar trees. So Skyrocket Juniper gets its name because it grows extremely quickly. They go up to 15 to 20 feet in height, but they're only about three feet in diameter. And then the Norway Spruce also is at 20 feet in height, but about five feet. And so what we're doing is having, putting those, so kind of a hedgerow, if you will, along this back, this southern property line for, as a mitigation. Again, the other thing that the site has is these umbrellas all over the pool deck that, and you can see this is one of their other facilities, where there's houses right adjacent to it, and they haven't had any issues. The, any noise that comes out of the area is, is dampened by those umbrellas. It hits the bottom of those and doesn't make it to the top. And one thing we didn't mention is this line right here that you can see, that is a delineator line between the adults-only area, so it was strategic that the adults-only area was placed here at the south. Any kid area and the family areas are on the northern side of that pool deck. And I made a little summary for you, but we're running out of time, so I'm going to get Jeff Bowers up here to discuss the variance.
Hey, you can, you have five minutes for the variance, and then your time will be up.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Council members, Jeff Bauer, 601 West Bannock, legal counsel to the applicant from Givens Persley. And I am here just to talk really narrowly about the variance application and then the CUP modifications that we're requesting. Mr. Neri went over it in detail at the beginning, maybe a little quickly, so I'll hopefully try to follow behind that and provide a little bit more context. At the prior hearing, we were pleased with the council's comments, generally very positive, but Mr. Neri did raise valid concerns about the setbacks we are proposing. So pursuant to Mr. Neri's comments and the council's motion, we did file a variance to address the reduced setbacks. And we're asking for reduced setbacks to two specific, specific use standards, and those deal with 100 feet to a residential zone, 50 feet to the property line. So we're essentially asking for the same setbacks, but in two different code provisions. LUPA, the Local Land Use Planning Act, and the UDC, they both give this council the authority to approve the setbacks in this case. Variants are designed to specifically allow reduced setbacks. The Local Land Use Planning Act, here's a quote from the variance section. "A variance shall not be considered a right or special privilege, but may be granted to an applicant upon a showing of undue hardship because of characteristics of the site, and the variance is not in conflict with the public interest." And I have that language on the slide in front of you guys as well. The UDC has broken that down into three separate standards: not a special right, hardship, and not detrimental to health, safety, or public welfare. I'm going to go a little bit out of order and start with site characteristics. I have all of them kind of summarized here for you. First, we have the Milk Lateral. That's on the right side of your screen. As Tamara mentioned, it does kind of diagonally bisect the property. We have a bunch of cross-access easements, as well as access to the arterial streets and then the Idaho power facilities. And on top of that is just the general sort of strange shape of the parcel. So taking all those together, those site characteristics do create a reduced building envelope for us. And that is a hardship, and it's a hardship that you can vary based on your UDC standards. Staff report does agree that there are hardships here that can be relieved by the variance. Second, health, safety, public welfare. Tamara's addressed a lot of these. You know, we don't think that there are health, safety, public welfare issues at play here. The use is allowed in the zone. It's totally contained in fencing. We're going above and beyond with landscaping and buffering. There already exists significant landscaping and buffering, as well as a public street to mitigate any issues. And again, the canopies and buffers. So staff, again, did recommend that you could find that the health and safety would not be affected by this variance request, and we agree. And then lastly, the kind of, the factor here that's at issue why staff did recommend denial is not a special privilege. Staff was able, unable to make that finding, but we believe the council can make that finding, because Idaho law provides that a variance is not a special privilege where site characteristics warrant the variance. And that's directly out of LUPA and a large body of Idaho Supreme Court case law. Mr. Neri and I have discussed this as well. He agrees with the applicant's interpretation. So basically, the, in summary, if you find that the site characteristics warrant a variance, it's not a special privilege. You're not just saying, hey, we like your project, it's okay. The actual site characteristics do warrant the variance, and they give you the discretion to grant it. Real quickly, with the last 50 seconds, council review of the CUP. Again, Mr. Neri addressed those. We're asking for three things here. Extended outdoor operations from 5:00 a.m., I'm sorry, from 6:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. on weekday mornings. Again, the code specifically gives you the authority to do that. We agree with the Planning and Zoning Commission's findings there, so all you need to do is basically change the hour and the findings work. Second, the placement of speakers. Again, the code gives you the discretion based on a CUP to place speakers within 100 feet of a residential district. In this case, we advocate for the speakers because we do think it will reduce and mitigate the impacts neighbors. If we're allowed to place speakers in that zone right by our property line, we can aim them away from the residential district to really mitigate sound. Otherwise...
If you can just wrap up, please.
Yep. I think the, the point here is you have all the tools, as Mr. Neri said, to approve the application through the variance and the CUP. We meet all the standards, and I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bowers. Council, any questions?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, this is the public hearing portion of this, this application. And so, Mr. Clerk, I will ask you to call out the names of those that signed up and if they wish to testify.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First is Elizabeth Gammon, wishing to testify.
Thank you for joining us. If you'll please state your name and address for the record.
Well, thank you. Elizabeth Gammon, 3055 North Century Point Way.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. This right here, is that a road out to Eagle? This red line.
That is the obstacle of the irrigation district.
Okay. Well, I want to tell you right now, the traffic there is horrendous, mainly because of the shopping center there that they can't pull out left and get to Eagle Road, so they pull out to the right, and they come down Century Point, and they turn around. I have stood there and watched, and in 10, five minutes, I've seen seven or more cars do that. Also, when they put all this in here, and we're talking about not five days a week, we're talking about seven days a week, and we're almost talking about 24/7 with all the hours that they want, traffic is going to be horrible. And the people are going to come down Century Point and come out through those streets I don't like the ideal of the long hours. I don't like the ideals of the traffic that's going to be there. And I'm going to tell you that I have tried to pull out in the morning to go right onto Eustick from Century Point. And with the traffic coming down Eustick, they often stop right in the middle of the road, and I've had to sit through a couple of lights just to turn right. Or I can't get out onto Eustick to make a left onto Eagle Road. They put all this stuff in there, it's going to make it much, much worse, and it's going to be constant. It's not going to be five days a week, it's going to be seven days a week, and it's going to be horrific hours. They're going to be going through the subdivision rather than going out the other way, a lot of them. I also don't like the idea that they want to set the things closer. My daughter's house is right up against the back here, and she, her property line is like four feet from the fence that's there now. So if it's only 50 feet from there, that's not too good. I don't know what else. I don't know all the rest of this stuff. I do know also, or I've heard, that the fence that Jackson Square has put in along there is actually kind of on the inside the line, inside the pipes. So I don't know if they're aware of that, the pipes are on the, you know, the irrigation pipes are on the other side of the fence. I just think that's, poor Jackson Square is really hemmed in with all kinds of problems, and we've had previous problems with the other building there. Jackson Square, with the rest of it, pays 50% of the cost of the irrigation, and they're only less than third of the population are the use of the water. Anyway, the main thing is the traffic.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Your time is, is up.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have any concluding remarks? You do have the site plan in front of you, and this does not have access to Eagle Road. Is that correct, Sonia?
Madam Mayor, actually, if you can see where my pointer is, there is a right in, right out right here. No, wait a minute. No. Oh, excuse me, I'm mistaken. It's actually down here to the south at Seville Lane.
And that just goes through, that's going to just bring more traffic through that subdivision.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, next is Scott and Heidi Baumann.
Thank you for joining us. Yep. Scott Baumann, 2992 North Valier. I would be located, I don't know if you can see where I'm pointing, the large... I would be located, I don't know if you can see where I'm pointing, the large parcel of empty land there to the south is my home. I'm on record with Meridian Police Department multiple times, calling, because the traffic going through our development is insane, it's fast, and Meridian Police have told me they can't enforce the speed limit in there. I've got Jimmy Johns going 40 miles an hour through there, all hours of the day. This will absolutely cause a traffic nightmare, as well as noise. I don't, I don't, I think they're asking for variance that they can't prove the volume. I've heard a lot of ambiguity. I would like to see a report from any one of these other ones that they've built, and how, if I'm 55 feet away as a resident, how much noise do I hear at 9:00 o'clock at night? How much noise do I hear at 6:05 in the morning? I didn't pay $200,000 to have this thing come land next to my house. I don't, I have not heard any solid proof that the volume and the traffic flow are going to be somewhat mitigated by anything in this proposal. I would just ask counsel to think about, if you had spent your money on a home, would you want this in your backyard? When I put this house in here, I never thought this was going to be this. I thought it was going to be a small strip mall, or possibly some more housing. I never, ever imagined it could have been a 50,000-foot monstrosity like this. And I'm not on the Meridian Police. I understand we're limited in scope, but Picard is a private lane, so Meridian Police tell me they cannot write a ticket in there. So, when I got people flying in and out of here, who do I call? What do I do with that? As I look at this, again, we are getting so much cut through, as the prior resident said, I'm going to get a clog in here. We have a light at Eustick, we have no light at Eagle, and this city council has already declined to allow to have a light at Eagle on here on the south side of this parking lot. So, how do we get out? What do we do? I think it's a nice idea, but they don't have, they have not answered the noise questions, they have not answered how they're going to deal with the additional traffic. And I don't want to hear a semi backing up at 3:00 in the morning, loading up stuff, because I am 55 feet from this back fence.
Thank you, Scott. We appreciate your testimony.
Madam Mayor.
And I will say that the applicant, when they come back up, will answer the questions that you have raised. Mr. Kavner?
Just curious, I think your concern about Picard is somewhat valid, and it's been a frustration of mine, because I still don't have a good sense as to who owns that street. And so, I think that probably makes our challenge for our police department that much more difficult. Because it's not a public street, because it is a private drive, I...
For my own identification, what does that mean? It's a private lane, so does that mean, as a resident, I can go 60 miles an hour? I'm being flippant, but can I go 60 miles an hour down that road? Because who's going to control these people?
We do have a representative, I think, from ACHD here. Do we?
Justin's not here.
We do have our amateur traffic guy here, our planning manager. So, we can hopefully address your question.
Just a quick last-denial, I promise I'm done. I, really, again, I've spoken to Meridian Police. They've come out, they've been really nice, there's just nothing they can do, because there's a blue sign, it's a private lane. So, where in this plan is something to mitigate that traffic flow, the speed and the noise that I'm going to encounter? Thank you.
Mr. Kavner, did you have a...
Do you know who owns it? I guess I was under the impression that your homeowners' association was the one that owned that private drive.
And that's what I thought, too. So, then my question to you folks would then be, then why can't I say, "No, I don't want these guys coming in my private lane? I paid for it." It's mine, not theirs.
Sure. So, you're asking me the question, I don't have jurisdiction over your private drive.
Well, as I don't. And I have no clue what the ownership rules are. But, I mean, all I know is when I'm on a road, I figure I'm subject to rules of the road. Well, apparently, if it's a blue lane, you're not subject to the rules of the road, because we had a guy run into our stop sign, and the Meridian Police came out and said, "I can't even write a ticket on that. It's a private road." So, that leaves me a little flummoxed as to what we're going to do with this thing.
Lieutenant Caldwell, maybe you can shed some light on some of these questions.
Madam Mayor.
Do we have no jurisdiction over private roads?
On certain crimes, yes, we do. On things like DUI, reckless driving, there are certain driving misdemeanors that we can enforce on private property. However, many of the codes that the gentleman is referencing, such as speed or stop sign violations, we can't, some of those infractions, you know. And that's just from my experience as an officer.
And I know they're getting tired of hearing from me, because I call them regularly. To be blunt, they always come out, they talk to me, but there's nothing they can do. If they're going to be handcuffed without this monstrosity, then they have, we have to do something if you're going to allow this thing to come in here.
Well, one thing I will ask the applicant, because there is an entitlement on the property to your north, and it was for great square footage, and so, I would imagine, and I would like to get the applicant to ask that, is will this be reduced traffic impact than the original proposed development? I assume that this is less impact than the original proposal that has already been approved. And I believe it was approved before the housing units were placed in there. So, we'll ask the applicant to address that, but thank you for your concern.
Thank you again. Appreciate it.
Next is Jeff Verba, wishing to testify.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to just hold off a little bit. The last one is keep going.
Okay. Yes. You bet.
Madam Mayor, next is Carrie G., wishing to testify.
Hi, Madam Mayor and Counsel. Good evening. My name is Carrie Gammon. I live at 3055 North Century Point Way. I am actually a teacher at Ponderosa, which I think you may be familiar with, as you've been there several times. I actually would like to know, considering the other facilities that have been built, the, both sides, if they are in the middle of a residential area, if the entrances go through residential areas. I would like to know how the people around the other facilities have dealt with this, if it's in a neighborhood like it's being proposed for hours. It seems it's a beautiful place, but bigger and making it closer isn't better. Working with children, I do know, and you have been to the school I work at, I hear through brick walls, and I hear through multiple rooms, you cannot keep a child's voice down through mesh and umbrellas. You will hear it, especially at all times of the night. I'm at the point where I feel like the public safety and welfare is in question, being the first house there. I see all the cars that come, and I see exactly how they drive, and it is extremely unsafe. We have called the police many times. And I do want to point out, on this map here, with this one exit here, with as bad as this traffic is, and I have lived this for nine years, these people are not going to pull out into the left turn lane to go left. They're going to continue to come through our neighborhood and pull out there. And it is to the point where I have people running over my rose garden, where I have people running my pets possibly over, you know, just standing out front, or me, having a child. That is a huge concern. I feel like at this point, I have to close my front living room window, I have to close my two bedrooms upstairs and my bathroom, because they're at an advantage point, or someone at an angle could absolutely see in at any time of the day, whether I'm there or not, to be able to see if I'm home, or maybe to watch me. I'm not sure. But I feel very uncomfortable with that, and I know what the traffic is like. And the noise going to 11:00 at night, I'm not really sure if there were people with a speaker facing that way outside the window, would that not cause any kind of problems if you were in here trying to work? I think it's too close. I think trying to move it closer is a bad idea. And I think that the hours are very excessive for something that is in a residential area where the cars will be coming through all times of the night, and the noise will be heard all times of the night. And I simply don't feel safe with that, especially with the traffic and the ways out, and how many more people will be there. Thanks.
Any questions from counsel? Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that was the last person indicating they wished to testify. Mr. Verba?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got a presentation, can I drop it off over there with them to put it on PowerPoint?
You bet.
Just a couple of slides. Madam Mayor and honorable councilmen and women, my name's Jeff Verba. I support the, I'm here on behalf of the Vice President of the Jackson Square Homeowners' Association. Like was mentioned earlier, we highly disapprove of this facility going in at this location. One thing that I had a problem with was that they mentioned that they have a hardship because of the shape of the land that they're trying to put it in. My job, I work at designing printed circuit boards. My job is to lay out the boards so all components are within certain parameters. They knew what parameters they had there, the Milk Lateral was in the way, the fence line there, they had to stay 100 feet away from that. They overbuilt their building, an area to go into that area. They were able to avoid the Milk Lateral, because we can't build over that, but we can shove it against the homeowners' association down at the other end, because we can probably get a variance on that way. If they would have laid out the building correctly, and to size, that 100 feet, they would have been well within where they need to be at. If they just moved the pool to the opposite side down on Eagle Road, that alleviated that issue, too. They don't want to do it. There was mentioned one time that they didn't want to do it because it was going to cast shadows in the pool. Then another time, it won't fit. If it doesn't fit, it doesn't fit. That building does not need to go in, and they should not be granted their variance. I went through on their website and downloaded some photos of some of the other facilities that we had in question. This one is the one in Beaverton, Oregon. The houses that we saw on the swimming pool, the swimming pools are all located right over here. The houses are this far away from the swimming pools. That's more than 100 feet, I'm sorry. And they're building it, trying to build it right on top of us there. The next one is their Colorado Springs facility. Here's the pools. Well, we do have houses really close, or apartment complexes, but they all went in after this facility was built. I've got proof by video on that here in a minute. The other houses that are close by are all clear across, these are both two-lane road, plus there's another median in the middle, so they're well over 100 feet away from their swimming areas. The Cypress, Texas, location, there's no homes anyplace in the near area for theirs. Their Katy, Texas, that they're building, once again, they're right along major roads, no homes around that area. Their Roseville, California, area, once again, no homes up here. They've got a few of the condominiums going in down here, but no homes. Their San Jose, that's the closest to any homes that there is. The pools are right there, and you've got single-level homes right there. I've seen that, and that's what concerns me. Do we want our facility to start looking like California? I love Meridian. We do not need to build stuff right on top of us. So, another thing I'm concerned with is, out of their facility right up here, you can see it's in Beaverton, they've got all the machinery back here that runs the pumps and controls their swimming pools. All that is going to be right next to Picard and, I can't even remember the name of the street, LeBlanc, right there. That's going to be right in that corner. We're going to have to be listening to those running all the time, along with the actual noise coming in from the pools. If you notice, they don't even put a fence up to block the noise from this facility. On the drawing that they had supplied, I was able to see that little spot there. It's a little spot right down in the corner, and that's where it's at. The other thing, other one we had a question on, right here is their facility in Colorado Springs. If you notice, all these apartment complexes came in after this is built, not before. So, yes, they are closer, yes, you've got a 25-foot water slide right out here, we've got single-family homes that this is going to be by. They could easily move the pool to the opposite end of their facility, and that would be a minute point. If they would lay out their facility to fit the lot they're trying to put in, we wouldn't even have, we wouldn't even be having this conversation here. They are trying to get a hardship, because they were trying to build a facility that is much bigger than the spot they were trying to go into. Other concerns that are really hurting us really bad as a homeowners' association is, when they were moving that Milk Lateral that she mentioned, they showed on there, the construction workers were lined on both sides of Century Point Way, which only left one lane to try to get through there. When they start building a building this size, where's it, where are the construction people going to park? Down Century Point Way, in front of our houses, throughout our whole subdivision? They're complaining about a hardship, because they can't manage the way they build their building? How much hardship is that going to be for our homeowners there? I've got two parking spots in front of my houses for my guests to show up, to visit me. I do have a driveway behind, but that's in a private road and everything else that way. But two spots, that's going to be filled up by those guys coming in. They also mentioned that they, they're having their community events. Once again, they have 500 spots, they mentioned before, for parking. Where's the rest of the community going to go? They're going to be coming into our subdivision, filling up our roads again, where we can't drive through safely, where there are some kids out in our neighborhood that play in the streets and on the sidewalk, because it's a quiet area down LeBlanc there. Now, they're not going to be able to do that, because we're going to have traffic there. I can't have guests come over to my house, because there's going to be traffic there. That's where our hardship's coming in. They're talking about their hardship, that's where my hardship is. That's why we want to keep the variance, or the code the way it is. Put them, if they're going to put their facility in there, make their pool 100 feet from the fence, like it was originally designed for by the former councilman and mayor that was here, when they set up the original exhibits there, that they set up there. That's where we're concerned with. We're concerned with the noise. I have three grandkids, I teach in Sunday School, three-year-olds, I'm used to kids, I love kids, but we do not need to be hearing that from 6:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night. And that's where our main concern is, and with them playing the music out there, we're getting all that information coming in. It's creating a hardship for us. My quality of life, if they build this building right out there with the 30, 25-foot water slide out there, or slide out there, plus the machinery that's going to be right behind their building, that's ruining my quality of life. I moved in, just like the other gentleman mentioned, into that area there, because I knew there was going to be office buildings or strip malls out in that area. A majority of us did that, because that's what we built, and that's what we looked at. If you keep changing all the developmental agreements around, it's going to hurt not just us homeowners, but everybody else. If you waive that decree and let them build it closer than 100 feet from our fence, because it's a hardship for them, because they didn't design a building to fit that lot, you're going to be doing that from then on. They even mentioned, Tamara actually had us come into a meeting across the way, which she was required to do, but when asked, she said she only made... which she was required to do, but when asked, she said she only mailed, mailed out the mailers that the city required, 300 feet or whatever it was from the impact areas. That's all they would do. So they do not want to spread it out further to let more people know what's going on or to explain stuff. They do not want to build over the milk collateral. They do not want to build a smaller building there. They do not want to move their pool. But we want to build this great big giant building and put it in a slot, a lot that was not designed for. And like I said, for me, designing printed circuit boards, if I did that for a cellphone and I have components sitting out over here, will that work? I can request all the variances I want. It's not going to work. We have to design stuff to fit the lot that you're putting in. They've got architects out there that can design to put in the lots that they're going to. They do not want to. They want the biggest facility they can get into that lot. They've got it designed. It's a beautiful facility from what I've seen on the videos and on their, online when I was looking, but my concern is it's too big for that lot. Traffic coming in during their community events, parking in the neighborhoods, it's going to be a nightmare out there. And that's where my main concerns are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jeff. Council, any questions? Mr. Cattler.
Jeff, can, or maybe can staff pull up a, a map with Google Map? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dean. Could, could we pull up like, like a Google Map of the, the area? And Jeff, I'm just, you can show us where your house is?
You could leave it right on that one there if you wanted to. We could have done that too, so. My house is located right here. This is where their, their machinery is that's going in that we were talking about. When they were ma, also measuring on that drawing where they had the measuring, they were looking at the 75 feet from the center here up to the pool. But look, this corner down here that they've got the bar and outdoor activities are a lot closer.
Is, is LeBlanc Way a, a private drive as well?
It's, no, it's not.
It's a public street.
It's a public street. The public streets run in on Center Point, all the way down around here, backside, up LeBlanc Way, and this little portion of Picard here is all public roads. So I know we can't do anything about the public coming in on that, but that's where our concerns are.
Or is the only one that's a private drive? Great. Thank you. Appreciate your testimony, Jeff.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and the City Council.
Additional testimony? Good evening.
Good evening.
If you'll please state your name and address.
Denise LaFevere, 6706 North Selvia Way, Meridian, Idaho.
Thank you.
And I, one, I think it's a beautiful facility. I'll, I'll give them that. It kind of breaks my heart a little bit to see that here you have neighbors and they're concerned about compatible use and they're concerned about transitions. And I really wish the neighborhood meetings would work better so they could work together and come up with a viable solution to be able to do good projects. Given saying all that, listening to Sonia, there was a statement about hardship of the lateral, I, and then the applicant came back and stated that it's titled. So I'd like to hear from Sonia why that's a hardship. And then the second thing is, is this was already zone commercial and it didn't require variance. So to me, it seems like just the change in the use is what's requiring the variance. So I'd also like to hear from Sonia about that as well, if that's okay. Mayor Tammy?
We will have her address that.
During closing, that's fine?
Yeah.
So that's all. Once again, it is a beautiful facility, so I'd like to see them work, work with the neighbors to be able to produce something nice.
Thank you, Denise.
So, yeah.
Yes?
Thank you, Mayor Tammy and the council. My name is Julie Highsmith, 2903 North Center Point Way. My major concern is we aren't a community of young adults in their twenties and single and party time. That's what this facility really is made for. The pool for the adults is supposed to be open until 11 o'clock. You know, they're going to close at 11, they're going to stand around and talk, they're going to be laughing, the whole bit. What do we do with our children when they have to go to school and they're still awake at 11 o'clock at night? That's not fair to the people that looked at these plans prior to buying our properties and building our homes. I don't think this facility in this location is right for us. It, you're, you're not allowing the people that have been there for some 10 to 12 years to live the style that they bought into. Yes, we knew there was going to be development there, but not something like this. It's not only the noise, it's the traffic. And many of you have been in that area and if you come during the day, there's a school three blocks away. We can hear the kids all day long. Three blocks. We're only a half a block away from this. So, and it's going to be going on till 11, 12 o'clock at night. So please think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further testimony? Yes. Thank you for joining us.
I'm Becky Webb and I live at 2880 Center Point Way.
Thank you, Becky.
And I just want to say that on multiple occasions, I've spoken to neighbors about this proposal. There's people that are excited about it. My husband and I are in favor of it. We are in our 40s. We have a 14 and a 13-year-old that still live at home. We see the benefit of it. We understand that what has already been approved is, quote unquote, could be worse. What could go in there, I wouldn't want to see, but I am excited about this project. It gives all of us neighbors a chance to get to know each other better, provide a safe place for my kids to come and for us to exercise. And I would look forward to the landscaping that would be provided. We've lived there since 2012. That field, I'm, you know, it's ugly. There's going to be traffic. We live on a busy intersection. We all knew when we moved in there that it's a busy area, but we, my husband and I chose to live there because we wanted to live in an area that's close to shopping and schools and the ease of being able to get to things like that. And this is one more thing that will be easy to get to and provide a healthier lifestyle. So I just wanted to say, there are people in this neighborhood and in our area that are in favor of it. And you know how it goes. If you're in favor of something, you're not going to take the time out of your evening to show up and say you're in favor of it because you're busy. If you're really feeling like you want to be heard because you're not in favor of something, that's why you're hearing from more people than what are in favor of it. But there was a forum discussion on our online email group.
Next door.
Yeah. And there were multiple people that commented in there that they're in favor of it. So I just wanted to let you guys know that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further testimony? Okay, at this point, yes, ma'am.
Can you see for one more? For this one?
Good evening. My name is Janet Bailey. I'm 2925.
I'm sorry, if you'll say your name one more time.
Janet Bailey, 2925 North Center Point. I do the neighborhood watch there. I've lived there seven years. I have watched the traffic in the area. It's worse. It is, and I know we've had discussions with you many times about Jackson Square and the traffic. We've had bus stops moved because of the traffic, especially in front of Carrie's house. The, and the, the whole, the whole point with this facility, the outdoor bo, the bar, the pool late at night, when I moved in there, it was, it was peaceful. It was a nice little community. I knew, well, I was told out front on Eustick, it would be a little strip mall with a restaurant in the corner. Yay! That was great for all of us. I mean, there's a lot of retirees in there. And it's quieter, it's peaceful. It's not peaceful. It's really becoming a, a, an anxious neighborhood because of the traffic, the constant traffic. They just blow down Center Point. You know, and calling the police, well, I'm sure they're sick of hearing from Jackson Square. But it's true. We, that's all we have. That's our only recourse. And with my neighborhood watch connection, they told me, that's all you can do, call the police. Well, I'm sure they have better things to do than chase down these speeders, but it, it's honestly true. The traffic is bad. The pool where it's situated with the 25-foot slide, that noise is going to just radiate into the neighborhood. I'm just a few houses down from their 300 foot, but I can hear it. I can hear the school. And it's that whole area, you know? And as far as being in the shopping area, that was a part of the reason we thought we would buy there because we weren't too old to drive. We'd just walk. Well, you try to cross those streets, you're going to get killed. There's no way. The traffic is insane. Traffic backed up on Eustick coming in. And when Jeff said that when the construction, they took up so much of the road, there was barely enough room to get through when they were doing their stuff. But I hope you don't let them push the boundaries. It seems like they take a little bit and they're just, they're, you know, you give them a little bit, they're going to take more. And I feel like that building is just on top of us. So it's taken away that little piece that we all bought into.
Thank you, Janet.
Thanks. Thanks for your time.
Okay, any further testimony? Okay. Well, I'll invite the applicant to please come and make final remarks. You have 10 minutes. If you'll please restate your name for the record.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. My name's Mike Fassler, here with Villasport. Just to kind of address some of the issues that they've brought up today. One is about the, the intensity of the project. This, our proposed use is much less intense than, than what could be done on this corner. This is a commercially, commercial corner, commercial district. It's one of the busiest intersections in the whole state. And in our experience, like for example, the height, we're 36 feet high. It could be 65-foot building. We're not going to have trucks unloading and loading behind the building. All the loading and unloading is done, not by big semi trucks. We don't have, we're not a big box retailer. We don't have supplies coming in and out. These are small little delivery trucks that show up in the front of the building and they pull the things in from the front. So we don't have loading docks and a lot of unloading and loading. And then I know one of the speakers talked about the fact that Villasport has residential nearby or doesn't have residential nearby. In San Jose, for example, those residential is already there. We built it next to the club. We have not any complaints. It's been well received by the neighborhood. In Colorado Springs, we built first and they decided that, yeah, we'll build multifamily right next door overlooking the pool. I mean, they're right on top of it, much more intense than what will be proposed here. And I want you to, I want to point out that, talking about intensity, I know there were some concerns about parking and public events. When we do a public event, which is, which again, the, the school forum is one of the ones I could think of, that's done one time, it's the time of day when things, the club's not being in use very much. It's going to be a less intense time. And we also, just to point out the parking, we have 500 spots roughly allocated to Villasport. The code only requires about 200 parking spaces here. So we, we are well parked for what, what we need. It's consistent with our other clubs. And then noise, I know there were concerns about noise. One of the things is the building itself will actually mitigate some of the noise in the residential area that comes from Eustick Street. If you look, a lot of the residences are right across from where the building would be placed. And that's been the experience that we talked about, I think, at the last city council meeting we were at with the Lowe's project down the street with the neighbors there. And I think another issue came up about a bunch of, a lot of 20-somethings using our club. That's simply not the case. Two-thirds of our memberships are family memberships. Just to give you a breakdown of the profile, looking at our Beaverton Club, the average member is a 41-year-old female. It's a family membership. There's 2.3 kids on the membership. The Villa Kids really does attract the, attract the families. The moms and dads can leave their kids in the Villa Kids for up to two and a half hours while they go work out and do something or go use the pool. We also have day camps that we offer during non-school hours. So a lot, a lot of the times the kids are actually in school. They're going to be using this during the daytime. They're not there at 10 or 11 o'clock at night using the swimming pools. They shut down earlier than that. We need the 5:00 AM time because of lap swimming for master swimmers. That's a very important thing. They work out four, five days in the morning or four days of the week at 5:00 AM. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have regarding this project. Thank you. Oh, one other thing real quick. This prototype, we've been talking about trying to change the, the building. This is a prototype we've used three times now and we're currently using in the two clubs under construction. This is something that's a proven model. It works for us and it, it's feasible. We can't build something smaller. This is the, this is our brand. This is what we do. And so that's, just want to address that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Tamara Thompson with the Land Group again. I took good notes, I think, so I'll try to address each of the items. Mike definitely talked about some of the operational issues. As far, traffic was heard a few times, definitely cut through traffic for the existing neighbors. With our development, we had to do a traffic impact study. So we have, I mean, one of the things that we have with, with these public hearings is fears aren't facts, that, you know, there's a lot of fears out there. The unknown is a fear, but for development, we have to back up our projects with facts. So we actually have a traffic impact study where we had a professional do a study and it was vetted by ACHD. And ACHD has a report that's in your packet. And they have approved our project with the accesses as proposed. And in fact, the traffic impact study thinks that the cut through that's happening on Picard for the other uses that are out there is actually going to be minimized by this development. With, with these access points that you can get to Eustick easier through these locations than through the neighborhood, there would be no reason for cut through for the, for the Villasport. Let's see. The one gentleman did mention to you, so Picard is public at this location and then it turns to private here. So that's been clarified. There was mention about semi trucks. So again, the, there's one little, there's a cafe and all deliveries for the facility come through bread truck size, delivery trucks through, through the front door. There, there are not semi trucks that are, that are going in the back, which is different than what the current development agreement would allow, that would allow, we would have semi trucks along this property line with the, with the development agreement. This, let's see. This is a, a major commercial corner. This is from the research that I did, the fifth busiest intersection in the state of Idaho. And I did have the benefit to talk to the neighbors behind the Lowe's when I did the neighborhood meetings for the Rose Hours, if you recall. I did the initial entitlements for this back in 2005 and I did the one for the Rose Hours across the street. So my neighborhood meeting for the Rose Hours Center, I had the benefit to talk to the neighbors behind the Lowe's and they were very forthcoming in telling me that that building made a huge difference in the sound that they heard from the intersection because the building creates that buffer. The, the noise, the ambient noise level for the traffic that's currently out here, this building is going to substantially reduce that. Mr. Fassler talked about parking. We have about twice the number of parking stalls that are required by code, but those parking stalls are what they, Villasport has determined with their other sites that they require. So we are parked for the with their other sites that they require. So we are parked for the use. And then, just have a couple. Just want to talk about the setbacks real quickly. So as Sonia mentioned in her initial comments, that these, most of the, most of the setbacks that we're talking about right now are related to the zoning district. And typically, those zoning districts change in the center line of a street. And in this case, it did not. This, these properties were originally brought in together. When they were annexed and zoned, they came through together, and then the development agreements were separated in 2004, which I believe is why that didn't get put on, on the street. But this dashed white line that I have here is the center line of the road. So that is where the measurements typically would be taken from, but that's, that's not where we are here. So from the edge of the pool to the nearest residential property, we're at 96 feet with the common area and the road in between those two. And again, there's that existing large trees. We're not removing those trees. In fact, we'll be adding to those with our proposed hedgerow, if you will, from, from what we'll put on that property line. So we are mitigating for any concerns. The Villasport has projects, properties that are adjacent to residential uses, and they have not had any complaints at those. With the umbrellas, it definitely helps those. And this is just a summary that I prepared for you. It seemed like there's three different applications that I have highlighted and bold at the top, and then just a handful of items there that we are asking for your approval on. We've read the staff report and these, and we agree with staff's findings with these changes. And with that, we gratefully, we're grateful to you guys for your, for your time, and we appreciate, we'll appreciate, we'll look forward to your approval tonight. Thank you.
Counsel, questions for Tamara or Mike? Or Jeff?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavener.
Tamara, I don't think you necessarily touched on it. There was a concern brought up from one of the residents about some sound mitigation around your pump system, the pool pump system. Curious if you can, okay, perfect.
Councilmember, so the pool pump...
I'm sorry, Mike, if you'll just state your name.
Yeah, sure. It's Mike Fassler with Villasport. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So pool pumps are primarily right there in the closed direction, in the closed area. There are some mechanical things on the roof, et cetera, in the back, but...
Madam Mayor, then, just for clarification, Jeff, the, I think the resident that testified alluded to some type of pump system near the southern part of your building. It sounds like that's not the case. Yeah, right rear area is where he alluded to.
The pump, the main pumps are right there, and in closed structure.
In a closed facility?
Yes.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks.
Other questions from council?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Slow Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I don't know if this is a question for Mike or Tamara, but regarding the fencing and the trees and the additional trees, is the fencing going to be replaced with the new fencing and then additional, you even mentioned two other types of trees that were going to be added. It showed as trees that are going to be remaining. To clarify all that, I would appreciate it.
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. Councilman Roberts, the, so there's existing trees in this area, but if I can go back to my pictures, there aren't any right up against the fence at that location. This one shows a little bit better. So you can see there, there aren't any against the fence at that location. So we're not proposing to remove the fence. That would be essentially a double fence in that location, because we wouldn't, we wouldn't want to use their fence, and then if it happened to fall at some point, you know, we, we need to make sure the pools are secure. So we would have our own fence on our property line. Those, that one is in from the property line just a little bit. And then we have a landscape area of six feet between the fence line and the pool deck. And in that area would be the landscaping that we're proposing. Does that answer?
That does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tamara, I guess I have a couple of questions. The staff has recommended a masonry wall. Is, is that, certainly, I, I would agree with the, the neighbors that a see-through fence with fabric screening doesn't necessarily block any noise. Would, would that be acceptable as a, as a requirement?
Madam Mayor, we did some research for acoustical abilities of different fencing types, and the sound batting for the fabric is actually superior to a hard surface. Hard surfaces, sound hits it and reverberates. And so the, the proposal that we have with the sound batting is, is actually a superior product acoustic-wise, because of that, because of the sound batting.
That's just counterintuitive to anything that comes to mind, but just additional questions. There, with the 5:00 AM start, and it's primarily for the lap swimming, from, I can't imagine a kid being out there at 5:00 AM, would the applicant be amenable to not turning on the music until 6:00 AM?
Madam Mayor, they have agreed to note the speaker system outside would be limited from 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Okay. And on the children's pool, would there be an openness to a hard-stop time for pool hours for the children's pool? Would that be the 9:00 PM as well? Or that's only speakers?
The 9:00 PM is for speakers. Yeah, Madam Mayor, the, the time of, and I should've brought my notes up here, the time of operation is 5:00 AM lap pool, and then to 11:00 PM is the outdoor hours. And that's approved, just the hours of operation for the zone, too.
I know. Our, our noise ordinance is 6:00 to 11:00, so I understand.
So anything changing the operational hours, I'd need to ask Mr. Fassler to come up and address that, if you would like to hear from him.
Um, well, I, let me just ask, since you did the entitlements, as I recall, for this corner piece, I imagine you did a traffic study on that. Is there a reduced impact of traffic, this development, as opposed to the original application?
Madam Mayor, from what the existing development agreement has approved, and this development, it is a less intense use, and definitely on the traffic side as well.
Is, now, I, I guess I, it was really interesting to hear your statement about the fencing. So could you work with ACHD on both Center Point and Picard and install no parking signs to eliminate the concern about the parking in the neighborhood? I, I certainly understand what the neighbors' overall concerns are. Is that something I, you would be open to considering as well with the, working with ACHD on that and installing the signs?
Madam Mayor, I don't, I don't see any issues with installing no parking signs there. We, we don't feel that, we feel we're parked adequately and that we're not gonna have overflow parking in the, in the neighborhood.
There's a concern about the outdoor bar location, and that is, I, can you show the, the site plan and maybe point out where that outdoor bar facility is?
One thing I didn't bring up is the swimming pools are only seasonal outdoors, so they're not open year-round. So they're usually, they're probably, we haven't set the hours, but usually it's like end of, beginning of May to end of October, or something like that.
So you must have a heated pool.
Yes, it is a heated pool. The, the, let's see if we've got, good. So the, the outdoor, this is all the adult area, and so there's a, off the side of the building, there's a, a bar area right here. It serves the adult area. And we'd be amenable to saying that the hours of the water slide or water features would be limited, so they close at 9:00 o'clock at night or something like that.
Thank you, Mike.
Sure.
And I, I guess, other than questions for staff on Picard, it's, it is a mystery, and maybe we can figure it out tonight. But construction worker parking, certainly the, the concern of the neighbors and the impact just for the irrigation ditch work. Where, what is the plan for parking for your construction workers?
Madam Mayor, the, when the site is fully under construction, they'll have an, an area for staging that will be off of the street. This was something that, to put in, to tile the milk lateral, that it was just a quick, couple-week project, so they didn't build a whole yard for their parking and that kind of stuff, and that's unfortunate. I did not know about that until tonight, as far as the, or the issue, actually, it was the last hearing after the work was done, that we heard about it. But they will have a layout area on-site, but there is gonna be some construction on Center Point. So currently, there's not curb gutter and sidewalk on Center Point, and that is being installed on both sides with this project. So, so there's, you know, it's gonna be a construction project. There's definitely going to be some times when lanes are gonna be restricted and that type of thing for the full road section to be constructed. But we'll make sure that there's a specific area off of the roads for construction activities and lay down and parking in that.
Thank you. Any council, any further questions? Thank you, Tamara.
Thank you.
Sonia and Caleb, there, I, I know Denise had a couple of questions, but can you maybe talk about that section of private road and how we can help mitigate traffic impact in that area? And, and really, how can a development use a private lane as an access? I, I guess it baffles me how the impact of anything to the north is allowed without some kind of mitigation.
Madam Mayor, so a couple things. Remember, this was all part of one, at one point in time. I mean, it was all, the concept plan was all master planned together. That's why you have the cross-access easements. And it was always envisioned that these two, there would be some traffic amongst the subject property that you're considering tonight and what already exists to its south. I will just point out, I, I, so the, the portions of Picard and Cajun and Seville that are private, honestly, there's not a lot the city can do for reasons that have been talked about tonight. Police can't write tickets. We can't do anything. There's not a public realm there. That is on the HOA, and they own and maintain and are responsible for that. They could potentially look at traffic calming measures, some speed humps, some circles, some chicanes, some, some things like that on their, their, their roads. We'd want to coordinate with the fire department to make sure that they can still have emergency access, but there's some things that they could do through their HOA, potentially, that could help that. I'm not here to say that's a silver bullet. You still may get people that still go through there, but you could slow traffic down potentially, or even divert some folks. The portion of Center Point Way that's a public street, ACHD though, and the city can be involved in some of those things. We could do some of the same treatments, but that is where the city, if you will, really through ACHD, could work on doing some things that could hopefully address volumes and speed concerns, at least on the public street sections. I will just point out, though, this is a good example of why, in our code, there's two things that aren't, aren't present here. One, in our code, it, it talks about the intent of private streets is not intended for single-family projects. This is one of the reasons why. Two, we also require gates on, on streets for, that are for private. Again, this is one reason why. We can't police them. We really don't have control on them. And we don't want to gate too many communities off of each other. We do like that interconnectivity. The third one I will also point out isn't necessarily ours, but more ACHDs. You typically don't want a private street connecting two public streets, because you get things like this, and then you can't do anything about it. So again, I don't have, I don't have a, a real solid answer. We kind of painted ourselves into the corner a little bit with some of this, though. And again, that, there was a master plan that this all worked together. I do think there are some things that could help a little bit. But yeah, I don't, I don't remember and didn't research it before tonight, how we exactly got here, but it is certainly not ideal. If you want to address anything else. And I am, just in conclusion, I'm willing to, to help talk with the neighbors about, again, the ACHD roadway segments, and maybe there's some things they can do with John Watson and, and petitions that way for what is public right-of-way, and some things that maybe could be done that way, to slow people down, at least on the Center Point, you know, stretch, kind of through the middle of this campus. I know that on your agenda, you have a request for a waiver of the crosswalk. That was one of the intents, was to slow people down a little bit, to have at least some visual, hey, people could be crossing here across the street, so maybe slow down instead of speeding through there. But anyways, I'll, I'll make that offer, that I can, I can certainly put them in contact and, and coordinate on the public street portions of this.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burton.
In regard to the traffic calming measures along Picard, I don't remember if it's Picard, I guess Picard goes all the way down, but I'm fairly certain there's already traffic calming measures there that are existing, and they're not small. They're big. I mean, in my opinion, it would be very difficult to go 40 miles per hour down that road. It's my opinion.
But you can see, I haven't been the one speeding through there. I didn't know about all this.
I could be wrong. I could be, I could be thinking of a different road, so I could be wrong, but I'm fairly certain there's already traffic calming measures on that, on that road. Just saying.
I, I guess we could ask the neighborhood if there are traffic calming measures there. I, I can't take testimony from the audience.
Madam, Madam Mayor, I think there is. I think we went through this discussion when the commercial property up on Eagle Road came through, was trying to create some traffic calming. But just an overarching observation is, is back to, somebody made the comment that the proposal and what could be done on this property yesterday, and if this is denied tomorrow, is more intense, more traffic than what's proposed. So sometimes we're, we're dealing with greenfield development where there's no annexation, there's no entitlement rights to build anything, and the question is whether we should go from zero to allow some type of use, which would create traffic which would not otherwise exist. This is different, and it's frustrating, certainly for the public. Because really, the discussion is either A, it's traffic of a certain level, or with this proposal, it's something certainly less. To what degree, we don't know. You know, a traffic impact study provides us the greatest objective metric of a reduction in traffic, but... To what degree, we don't know, you know, a traffic impact study provides us the greatest objective metric of a reduction in traffic, but that's the reality. So a concern on traffic, for example, on Picard, it goes down with this application than it does with 150,000 square feet of CG. Now whether that should have been approved back in '05 or '06 to ever allow this much traffic, that ship has sailed, which is frustrating, certainly frustrating. So back to the, the focus of traffic on Picard, the reality is what's proposed as to the traffic issue is asking for a reduction on the impact on that private lane as well as Center Point, and what otherwise exists if we don't have this application. So if that's helpful, at least I think it frames our, what we have to consider and what the public will be left with, should this go forward or should it be denied? So, and, and Picard does have, I think it's a, is it called a hummock, I think that allows the fire truck to get through?
I was just looking at it, uh, Councilmember, uh, Borton and Burton, uh, and Madam Mayor, uh, there is traffic calming devices on Picard, there's two of them, uh, they are traffic cushions.
And Madam Mayor?
Traffic cushions?
Cushions, yes.
Pillows.
Um, Mr. Clerk, can you pull the Google map up or, or maybe Sonya? So we can see what was just referenced.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
Does, well, we'll look, they're designed though, so our, our public safety vehicles can get through them quicker.
Correct, they're, they're designed so that the axles of the fire engine can get through there, but not a standard vehicle.
That's why they're a cushion?
Yes, they're very cushiony.
Or, oh, you said a pillow.
A pillow.
We'll, we'll bring it up just so, uh, now that we've referenced it, uh, we want to make sure we all know what we're referring to.
If you click on satellite.
Why we pull that up, council, any, any other questions?
Down to the bottom corner.
At this point. Yeah, you're, you're in the right spot. Yeah, hit the satellite.
Yeah, click satellite, the bottom corner.
Bottom left.
Yeah, where it says satellite. Oh.
Sorry, I have a marker that's covering mine, it's about this wide.
Of course, it's always, um, nicely placed.
Thank you.
Sonya, I think if you zoom in a little bit farther, you can see him.
Oh, there they are. Oh, wow.
Thank you.
I'm only here for the end of the year.
Thank you for dropping that man right there. Okay, perfect. Counsel, any other information you need from the applicant, from staff, or, uh, those that testified?
Madam Mayor, I think, I think there were some questions from so, or from Denise for Sonya, not from Sonya to Denise, that I didn't know if Sony wanted to have a chance to respond.
Um, sure, Councilman, just one moment here, if you guys are done looking at this, I'll switch screens. Um, so the, the relocated Milk Lateral is shown there, the red line, um, so it fairly, uh, fairly constrains the site development area. There's also an access easement to the east for access to the property, to the east to Center Point Drive. And then, of course, you can't shift the building to the north because you can't build over the, the lateral.
Then you have setbacks or, for access points that further constrain that. And was there one more question?
Not that I'm aware of.
Mr. Neri.
Madam Mayor, I thought the other question that was raised was why does this need a variance compared to what was already granted? And what was granted is a conceptual plan of buildings and elevate, or not even elevations, buildings and building footprints, uh, with drive aisles, uh, connections, driveways. So until the actual development comes in, then it's determined is a variance needed, whereas the location of the building is the height, it needs to be varied. So that's why where they're, what they're asking for does require that, and, and part of the hardship in, is not simply the lateral, but also, as he talked about, it isn't just the dimensions of the site, but it's the dimensions of site in relation to the property lines. This one is fairly unique, as, as was stated in the staff report and by Sonya, that the property lines don't go to the middle of the roadway like most common ones do around the city. And, and again, I think to go back to Caleb, I, I think I was here in '05, this was one big concept. And this was, this area here, this Picard Lane, was supposed to be a drive aisle, and the access was supposed to go to the north. And so that was what was anticipated, and that Picard Lane was merely to serve that one section of the housing development, and the other section was supposed to be served by the public streets. So at, when it got broken up and changed, that's why I think it's Councilman important to state it, I mean, that issue was decided as a whole, and then it got separated into bits and pieces, and so that's an unfortunate circumstance, but it's nothing we can do to change that, so.
Thank you, Mr. Neri. Counsel, anything further?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
Doesn't sound like there is. I'm going to close, or move that we close the public hearing on item eight, D, E, and F. I believe we're doing them all together?
Second.
Motion and a second to close the public hearing, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
I shared some of my comments about the, the scope of what's before us in these three applications taken together, um, in light of the existing entitlements on the property and what could be done here and the intensity of use. The applicant made reference to it, um, and I think staff did as well, um, clearly this, the staff report and the applicant's materials, referenced the CG zone and, and the intensity of use, both in the scale of the use, the, the mass of the buildings, um, the hours of use, and the type of impact this existing entitled right could have on the existing neighbors, which is quite intense and perhaps extremely frustrating for those that live nearby. Anybody who shared information that said it might be just a strip mall and a restaurant is it, was not probably accurately depicting what was zoned and entitled. And that doesn't help either, but it might have not given the public a real, clear understanding of, of the intensity of use that was approved there. So back to what's before us, I look at it from, from that perspective, that you have a, an extremely intense CG usage, which is going to create noise and traffic of a, of a considerable degree. Considering this application and, and the review of what the applicants prevent, presented, how P&amp;Z vetted it, I thought P&amp;Z did a wonderful job, uh, in trying to wrestle with some of these issues. And then some of the finer points that have come to us today, um, it's something that I'm, all things considered, I'm supportive of. I think the, in essence, reducing the intensity of usage on this property, uh, trying to facilitate some of the constraints that exist on this property, to allow for a, um, a use consistent with its zoning, um, seems appropriate. I think our staff has made a, in planning the zoning, has made some good reference to the intent of these setbacks. There wasn't necessarily anything magical back when the hundred feet from a zoning district was set, other than trying to capture the, an awareness that, that these sound impacts have, um, an actual impact on, on our residential neighborhood. You could have a, a situation like this, which truly is really unique, quite frankly, with the, the R-15 residential zoning really abutting this, this property, when normally we would see that portion of the, that triangular, the southwest corner, I guess, you would usually see a project come where that would be part of this application, which would create the additional setback. So there's really some unique factors with this, and the history of this project, which, which makes me think what is proposed meets the intent, um, of those requirements within our UDC. And, and as part of that, I think the variance findings are also, I think they can be met, uh, in light of the constraints that have been referenced by the applicant and by our staff. And I agree with, with counsel for the applicant makes reference to our UDC standards on the variances. It's, it's kind of weird, we really have, we have three standards, but it's kind of like we have two, because if you're going to have, be able to make a finding that you have unique site characteristics that create, um, cite it correctly.
Hardship.
Yes, um, characteristics of the site create a unique hardship. If you're able to make that finding, then you are in essence also making the finding that you're not granting a special privilege, because it's the unique characteristic of the site which warrants the, the variance in the first place. So you either have one and two, or you have neither of them. So I think those are met here as well. To the extent that our, our zoning allows the use, the time usage to, I think 11:00 PM, I, I wouldn't even restrict usage of the water slide, quite frankly. I don't necess, I don't think that's, from where that's located, that's necessary. So those are, those are my thoughts, I'm supportive of the request of the applicant, I'm sensitive to the concerns of the, of the neighborhood. Hopefully this is a less intense use, clearly it will be than what would otherwise be built, so.
Any other comments or? Remarks?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Counsel.
For the record, I, I tend to agree with Councilmember Borton, I've, I've really wrestled, um, with this project, and I'm fortunate that we were able to continue this and allow, uh, legal counsel and the applicant to connect specifically on, on the variance issue. That was a piece that I had some real concerns with, uh, a month and a half ago. The one exception, I guess I do have, and maybe slight disagreement with Councilmember Borton, pertains to the children's use of the pool and the timing. Um, it sounded to me that the applicant was supportive of reducing those hours to be a good neighbor, um, doing what I think they have done through this entire project was really try to be a good neighbor to the surrounding, uh, residences. Recognizing when there's a disagreement, sometimes that's really, really hard, um, and I appreciate, uh, your willingness to do that. So I'm supportive of the reduction, uh, I'm supportive of this project, uh, with the reduction of the hours of the water slide and the youth pool.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
I, I appreciate the point and, and the applicant's concession on that. I generally am not inclined to, to restrict usage, it's not necessary, but you bring up a great point, and, and I certainly would support a restrict timeframe, I think he said 9:00 PM. Or the children's usage of the water slide or water slide and pool area, certainly not opposed to it, and I appreciate you bringing it up, um, and appreciate the applicant's concession in that regard, if it helps mitigate some of the impact on the public, makes sense.
Well, there's, Mr. Burton?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, thank you, Mike and Tamara, and, uh, Mr. Lawyer from Givens Personally, I appreciate, I, I appreciate your, uh, your presentation. I think it was very well thought out and, um, very thorough. I, I frankly, um, I, I love this business model, I think it is absolutely awesome, um, I, I understand why you wanted that corner, you know, I, if I had a business like yours, I would want to plant it right there as well. I mean, location, 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 makes sense, I get it. Um, we have code in place, um, to ensure a healthy, safe neighborhood development. After listening to, uh, the applicant and, and the facts, um, I, I just, I'm, I'm not 100% convinced that, um, the applicants met that level for me to approve a variance for this, with this area. I almost think to myself, I mean, I wish there was a way that you guys could, you know, redesign or do something with this, with this area to make it work. I, 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 I'm looking at you right now, man, I, I, you're, you're, you're not liking what I'm saying, I get that, um, but, uh, we can agree to disagree. I just, I, this is, just, in my, in my opinion, I just, I just don't think that level's been met, and, um, so I, I, I love the project, I, I'm just not supportive of it, in this, in this particular area.
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Will Roberts.
Madam Mayor, um, I have really wrestled with this, I think it's a great project, I, I love the concept and everything. I so wrestle with where it is, but I think that history kind of dictates what our options are, and I think that I can, I have a lot of empathy for the neighbors, but I think that having something that is less intense, um, in that area will actually be better than what could be there. And I do think it's a wonderful project, I think that, I hope the neighbors, if we proceed, embrace it and enjoy it. I think somebody even said it's an opportunity to get to know the neighbors, and so, um, I definitely have my concerns, but I really appreciate the applicant and all the work that has been done to, to keep the scope so that it can hopefully be fairly neighbor friendly, and especially with the demographics that you're aiming for. And so, um, should it proceed, I hope you do absolutely everything you can to mitigate issues while construction is happening and things, because we all know how hard construction nearby can be on neighbors with dust, parking, and things like that. And so because our hands are somewhat tied, and I think this does fit as a less intense use, I am in support of the project.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
Well, I'll wait and see, nevermind, I'll wait and see where this goes.
Okay, if there's nothing further, um, I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Borton.
I'm going to, I move that we approve item eight, uh, taking them together, so D, E, and F, uh, it's H-2019-0011, uh, H-2018-0121, H-2019-0032. To incorporate the modified conditions to the CUP and the approval of the variance, um, as reflected by, in the applicant's language, uh, in their, uh, variance application, and to incorporate the revised site plan, which is today's date, of today's date that has been presented. of today's date, that has been presented before council. With one edit to the conditions to to accept the applicant's proposal that the children's pool area have a closing time of 9:00 PM. To reprove the remainder of the proposed language.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
Just for clarification, Councilman Borton, did you mean the entire children or youth pool area? Or just the above-ground water features slide?
Madam Mayor, I believe the reference was to the water slide.
The pool can stay open?
Water slide was where the, where the restriction was. If Councilman Kavanagh recalls differently, I believe that's, so that would be the motion.
Second.
This is the water features.
Correct. Madam Mayor.
Mr. Neri.
Madam Mayor, members of Council, Councilman Borton. I think the planning did request a specific reference to the access on the eastern side because of the joint access, or the shared access are gonna build off of USTIC, if you would include that.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, that was the reference to the decision on whether to grant the waiver? Yes. And that the waiver would be granted for the access as proposed. There was no objection raised to that, and so that waiver would be granted as well.
Still second.
I have a motion and a second. So discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Burnt.
Looking like where this may go. Just, just for, just for, just a thought, you know, 9:00, it's still light and fairly early in the summertime. You know? If I were a kiddo, I wouldn't want to stop having fun at 9:00 PM, just saying.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Borton.
One of the comments I was gonna make a moment ago, but in a previous application, we had tried to facilitate some work with an applicant, and I believe it was with this neighborhood concerning traffic calming. I think we can help facilitate that as well on Picard. ACHD was part of that. That's where we got the pillows that were discussed earlier, so. Not necessarily part of a motion, but more assistance that can be provided.
And I guess the, the no parking on Center Point and Picard, or at least along that northern boundary, and southern for that matter. I, I guess that would be part of what our planning team would work with ACHD on to mitigate the traffic impact as well as the parking?
Madam Mayor, the no parking signs weren't part of the motion. I wouldn't include it. I think the applicants expressed a willingness to do so. Not to get too much in the weeds, but if you want to calm traffic on Picard, you want cars parked on both sides of it. You'd want the most narrow street possible.
He'd never get a car through there.
It's not, but that's counterintuitive, right? The wider streets create higher speeds, so. Nonetheless, the no parking signs weren't a condition of the motion.
Madam Mayor and City Council, if I may, private lanes are required to be signed, no parking by our lane on both sides. And looking at the, I dropped my little guy in there. There is no parking signs on that road because it's required by the UDC.
There you go.
There you go.
Thank you, Joe. Any other comments? Or anything to be captured? Okay, hearing none. The motion is to approve item 8D. Allowing the, the reduction of setbacks, hours of operation with the restrictions on the children's pool. Anything further? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Burnt? Councilmember Palmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
And I believe that was regarding just item D. The DA modifications. And certainly the variance, the variance has to be set separately. Is that correct, Mr. Neri?
Madam Mayor, I think the motion was related to all three, and since you did have them all together, we can, we can prepare findings for all of it, as, based on that motion, if that was the desire of the council.
Okay, well, the motion, the discussion talked about why a variance is is applicable, but it wasn't in the motion.
Madam Mayor, he made a specific reference to the document that's in the, that's filed by the applicant.
Okay, very good. Sorry.
Madam Mayor, excuse me. May I clarify, please? You made a, you mentioned hours of operation restriction on the pool. I understood that earlier to mean just the slide. Is that correct?
The water.
The water.
The water features.
Above ground, so not including the pool area, the pool?
Correct.
Right, thank you.
That's how I understood it.
Could you clarify?
For Caleb and if, in your work with Ada County Highway District in looking at this area and how to minimize impacts, if you can include the HOA and the applicant as well in that. And I would like to thank the applicant, too. I know why you chose that corner. It's, it's a perfect corner and frankly, I, I'm kind of biased on my, our community. I know why you chose Meridian. We're family-oriented. This is about families, it's about kids, and, and I do think that that is what we are. I, I hope that you will work to establish a relationship with the neighborhood. And I, I think that they'll come to see that this will be an asset for their neighborhood as well. But thank you for, for being here. Anything further from the council on this? Okay. Okay, item 8G is a Public Works Department budget amendment. And I'll turn this over to Warren.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So last year, the city council approved a budget for $55,000 for Public Works to do that was supposed to cover our streetlight maintenance and also to cover the cost of a new program that we were developing, which was designed or intended to do utility locates for the power lines that feed our streetlights. So I'll address that in two pieces. The funding that you see here, the $86,000 is actually for both of those, but I'll take each one of them a kind of a piece at a time. So our funding for the streetlight maintenance program has been about $30,000 for several years now. Last year, we overspent that a little bit. We weren't sure if that was an anomaly last year or whether or not that was something that was going to become a trend. It became fairly apparent to us fairly quickly this year that that was a new trend. We have a lot, we put in 800 to 1,000 new streetlights a year. Many of those early streetlights that we put, streetlights that we put in were high-pressure sodium. They have a lifespan of about five to six years. And consequently, a lot of those lights are now starting to need regular maintenance. And so our maintenance costs are going up. So we have done some analysis to figure out what that cost needs to be ongoing and how to cover that. You'll actually see that in the budget presentation in a few months. But what we need right now is the additional funds necessary to continue to do maintenance on our streetlights. This replaces the bulbs, ballasts that are, have gone out, occasionally a new fixture, or even sometimes when lights get damaged and we have to go out and replace poles and so forth. This covers the cost of that ongoing maintenance work. The second piece of this really relates to the new program that we have, which is to go out and mark out our utilities, similar to what we do with water and sewer. We are required, when a contractor calls in and says, "I need to go dig in an area to go and mark those utilities." It's part of state code. We didn't realize as a city that we have these little segments of power line all over the place that run from the idle power facilities to our streetlights that we should have been marking out. Fortunately, we haven't had any major or serious issues where those have been hit. We have had a few, and we've had to go out and pay for the repairs on those facilities because it wasn't the contractor's fault. But we started a program and hired some contractors to help us go out and do that work. We used an estimate that was based on essentially what we were spending for water and sewer and approximately, you know, approximated the area that we thought we were gonna have to watch for power and came up with a budget for this year. And I'll be honest with you, we were, we were off. And that's the bottom line, we were off. The number of digline tickets that has come in is significantly more than what we had anticipated. And so to have the funding, to go out and perform the utility locates for the balance of this year, we're gonna need some additional money to fund that work. So you'll see on the back of the memo, or the second page of the memo, essentially the maintenance operations, we're asking for another $20,000 to continue the work throughout this year and for the locating services, another $65,000. And with that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Warren. Council, any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, if there are no questions, I move that we approve the budget amendment not to exceed $86,000 and $27 for streetlight maintenance and location for streetlight underground power.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve item 8G. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Commissioner, sorry, Councilmember Burnt? Councilmember Palmer? Councilmember Little Roberts?
Aye.
Councilmember Kavanagh?
Aye.
Councilmember Borton?
Aye.
All eyes most carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks, Al. Okay, item 9A is, I will call on our council president. It's getting serious now.
I like to look at you guys when I'm talking to you. Madam Mayor, Joe Borton, members of council. So the topic is city council meeting, agenda meeting improvements. So it's not rocket science that our meetings have run long, and Warren just gave us the most recent great example of how we are at times inefficient, what we're doing. Poor Warren, who's already left, his car's started and he's gone. Had to sit around for three hours of his time, waiting to present for 10 minutes. So is there a better way to, to do what we do? And there is. We have members of the public that we see who get stuck waiting hours late. We have our staff that gets stuck waiting hours late. We have, we don't have a cap on our time and our focus on our non-land use matters. All of this compiles to inefficiencies for staff, public, and us. Which brings us to midnight meetings. So five, six, seven, eight years ago, we started the Tuesday workshops, maybe a little longer, roughly. Tuesday workshops, taking two hours out of your workday each month, assuming an eight-to-five workday. Taking two hours, using all the non-land use matters there, community items, presentations. And that worked well as we were 40, 50, 60,000 people. Now we're over 100. It's grown. Our community needs have grown from proclamations to awards for state championships to staff reports and annual updates, all of which we need to hear. So the Tuesday night, or the Tuesday workshop is now so compressed with agenda items, to try and pack all of those non-land use items on one day is creating additional inefficiencies and now screwing up the other three city council meetings. That's a problem. Is there a solution? Of course there's a solution. Is there a handout? Of course there's a handout. Mr. Clerk. So you're not, Madam Mayor, you're not, we're not taking action, we're not voting, but you've got a handout. It's beautiful, it's a single page, it's in color. And it highlights on the top half what our month looks like now. First, third, fourth, Tuesday, starting at 6:00. It's gonna go fast. Man, we're going a long time. And then it just goes off the rails into late inefficiencies, late staff, late public. Not the best way to do our service. And then a Tuesday, which is a workshop, which is intended to be compressed and non-land use, then goes off the rails because we put everything and anything from our staff, which we have to hear, in our community presentations. So now that's not working. So is there a better way to do it? The idea is to take the two hours that exist on our second Tuesday, divide them up into four one-half hours. You start at 4:30. This isn't really fancy or unheard of, but it's, I think Boise does this structure. It's a work session. Every Tuesday, you start at 4:30. 4:30 to 6:00 is a work session. All non-land use matters, city staff reports, community presentations, all occur during the public city work session. That does a lot of good things. I've listed five of them. City staff, like Warren could have presented earlier. Members of the public who are, who are engaging in proclamations and awards and acknowledgements can get in and can get out. And the members of the public that want to testify at a land use area know that 6:00 means 6:00. And they're not stuck waiting until 7:30, even with, with good work to be done in front of them, waiting to testify. It provides more certainty for the applicant as well, who's spending their money and their resources, asking to participate in our city's process. So I listed five of those. That's what it would be. And I would like everyone to chew on this. The idea would be, if people are favorable of moving to a work session, you could use a, for example, July 1 start date. It could go a little sooner. But the idea is soon enough that, before individuals who are gonna run for mayor or for city council, that if we make a change, that they do so understanding what the new time obligation would be for their work. So it would afford enough time for us to try it out and for any person who wants to run to know the rules of the road and what the time commitment would be. So. That's it. So if you want to chew on it, you can give sort of a general, "I like the ideas. The pros outweigh the cons." "I'm very interested. Let's move forward. Thanks for the handout. That's good feedback." What would happen, there is, I didn't cite it, there's one, two sentences in one of our ordinances that talk about city council meetings. It's a relatively straightforward change to incorporate this, to edit that paragraph to reflect the new work session structure. It also, last thing, is executive sessions. We don't like them at 11:30 at night. Sometimes it happens. Utilizing this, we have the time, we're all here, 4:30 to 6:00, finish at 5:30. We can drop an executive session before our council meetings, if and when they're necessary, avoiding them late at night. It sounds like it's too good to be true. It sounds like it's almost a perfect proposal. I agree. I just think it's a better way to do business, and the public's gonna like it, too. So. Any questions?
Madam Mayor.
Good grief, it's brilliant. Mr. Burnt?
You know, I, I think we should, I think this new proposal's fantastic. I know Boise does the same thing, and it definitely will help alleviate some late nights. Late nights, no bueno. So I don't know if there is anyone that, if there is anyone that, you know, wants to think about this, we can wait. But I'm in favor of just getting the ball rolling now, personally.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Kavanagh.
I knew a council member once talked a lot about unintended consequences. And so I'm always on the look for unintended consequences when great ideas are presented. And I think this proposal does have a potential unintended consequence.
Yes.
And I think that is the removal of our workshop meeting. What I fear happens is that we just spread everything that happens in the workshop meeting over three other weeks, or four other weeks. And those meetings are already jam-packed. And so now that's feeding into our general meeting. And how do we develop a hard stop so that gives the mayor and council plenty of opportunity to thank the young people who come that have won another state championship for our who come that have won another state championship for our great community, another organization that's got a proclamation request that we're not getting in the way of department updates. So I'm 87.3% really supportive of this. But I think that it's important that we keep our workshop meetings in place and add the work sessions to our first, third, and fourth meeting. That's something that I'm a little more supportive of, at least for maybe six months to see how that goes. We, as staff and the public can attest, do a really good job of going really late regardless, even on easy items, and I don't want to have this work session get in the way of our regular...
Madam Mayor. Great question. I disagree. Here's the challenge I would put on... It very well may be an externality, but it's anticipated, and I think we could do it. I think the better approach perhaps would be to adopt this structure and challenge ourselves to disperse the staff and community presentations week over to week. We don't have to wait a month for reports and see how it goes. I think it takes some discipline on behalf of the mayor and council president to try and efficiently set an agenda that allows it to be accomplished within 90 minutes or less. I think it can be done. If we run into trouble, we can always have the discussion and expand it. Maybe it starts at four, but I wouldn't skip the opportunity to rise to the occasion with a compressed schedule. We can do it.
Madam Mayor. To that point, Mr. Borton, we maybe could... We have a fantastic council right now and a great mayor, but six months from now, that is all going to change dramatically. And so to say that we are disciplined... Yes, we may be disciplined today, but with new council and a new mayor, that can all change. So isn't it beneficial to keep things as is, add a little something extra, and then maybe look for a more substantive change come next year?
No.
I think we just arm wrestle right now.
Yeah.
Go with it.
Madam Mayor, this is the example. This is the case that demonstrates exactly what I'm trying to do. I would say no. I think brevity is rewarded, right? It is the soul of wit. Two ears, one mouth. And I think we want anybody who wants to serve in public office to understand there's a great value in being able to get your business done quickly, efficiently, get in, get out. Public appreciates it. Staff appreciates it. We can rise to the occasion. This challenges us. And we could have a shot clock, perhaps. That's another idea. That's another discussion. So, you know, we don't have to decide today if there's... We can talk more, Councilman Cavanagh, but we can draft the language, bring it back as a draft ordinance change, chew on it a little bit. There might be other unintended consequences, but I think the... It's not perfect, but the pros outweigh the cons, which is really all we want to do.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I'm 76.4% there. My major concern is, while I think your point is important that you'd want to get it done sooner than later so that people that are contemplating running would know what the requirement is going to be, I think for that very reason that it may make it far more difficult for somebody who would be very good in the position to be able to run, especially a younger crowd. I'm a very strange exception, I think, in having the blessed opportunity to have the employers that I do that are very willing to let me really do whatever I need to do to fulfill this responsibility. But I think generally people my age, and especially any younger, haven't really... Not many have grown into the position to be able to have that level of flexibility. So I think it would really make it more difficult to have younger people involved.
But I guess I would imagine anyone that is younger that... Or anyone in general that is employed in a structured hourly job has already talked to their employer, and there is an agreement that there's... That there will be a Tuesday commitment.
Yeah, it may be sixes. I don't think it's... You may be right. You may be wrong. I don't know. I think it's... One of the challenges is for the working folks who... That workshop Tuesday, you're basically... You're done. From lunch on, you're done. You're taking a half-day off in a sense, because you really can't get into an intense meeting or travel at 1:30 knowing you got to be here at 2:00, 2:30. So it's taking the same time commitment, dispersing it equally amongst, and now you're just leaving at 4:00 instead of 2:00. You may be right. I don't think it'll be fatal.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Palmer.
I mean, that's three to five. There's two hours there. 4:30, I mean, that's... I guess that's still two hours to five. I was going off till 6:00 because who works till 5:00? That's ridiculous. So never mind.
It's the same allocation.
Stop talking, Ty.
Give him a shot clock anyway.
Thanks for letting us chew on it.
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cavanagh.
And not something that would need to be incorporated in, I guess maybe two comments. One, thank you, Council President Borton. CJ, I know you spent some time on this. You and I have been talking about this as well. I think that's... I think this is great work. The other piece that doesn't need to be reflected in ordinance that I guess would maybe be a request. At the end of our meetings, you... Madam Mayor, you do a great job of summarizing all these great community events to seven people that are in the room. I would love if we reordered our agenda to add those community events when the public is in the room, because I think ultimately they're the ones that we want to be sharing that with. So just a thought, again, maybe as we... Again, I talk a lot about us leveling up as a council. As we level up our agenda to maybe look to incorporate some type of an announcement within that, so that way the public can be aware of the events that are happening, because ultimately, we know about it because we get the emails and we hear from you, but the public could really benefit from knowing some of the other things that are happening in our community.
Do that.
Any questions?
So I guess the next step is to bring a draft back for...
We can do that.
I can make a motion right now if you want.
Discussion.
We'll bring back... Madam Mayor, if it's okay, we'll bring back draft language relatively straightforward that isn't in color but captures the intent of this. So, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, ordinance number 10A is 19-1820. Mr. Clerk, will you please read this ordinance by title?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City Meridian Ordinance Number 19-1820, An Ordinance Amending Meridian City Code, Section 3-1-2A, Regarding Authorization of FBI National Criminal History Records Checks for Vehicle Immobilization License applicants, Adopting a Savings Clause and Providing an Effective Date.
Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Madam Mayor, I move we approve ordinance number 19-1820 with suspension of rules.
A motion and a second. There's no discussion. Mr. Clerk, will you call roll?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Commissioner, sorry, again. Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Little Roberts.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavanagh. Councilmember Borton.
Aye.
All ayes, most carried by the commission. I'm sorry, Chris. It will start to be a little bit more fluid.
It's muscle memory on the commissioner. It's not toward Councilmember Burton.
Item 11 under future meeting topics. As Mr. Cavanagh pointed out, we do have some upcoming events. Due to right is Thursday, April 4th, following the mayor's prayer breakfast, which starts at 6:30 AM at Cincy Commons. Only time I agreed to a 6:30 AM meeting ever, every year. Scholarship applications are due on Friday. Anything else for the good of the order?
Madam Mayor.
Ms. Little Roberts.
Would you please clarify where the prayer breakfast is? I understand it's at Cincy Building 2.
Which is their main building.
Thank you.
I think Building 1 is more their industrial building that's closest to the tracks.
Thank you.
Okay. If there's nothing further, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Seconds.
What? You can't so move. Okay. I have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All ayes.